Evening, everyone. The time is 5:30. It is Tuesday, January the 7th. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Heiser.
Here.
Zuniga.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we're going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. City council will now go into executive session to discuss items 1A through G pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.087. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. All right, hello, everyone. The time is 7:07 PM. It is Tuesday, January 7th. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
With the city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Heiser.
Here.
Zuniga.
Present.
Harris. McKinney.
Here.
Tobias.
Present.
All right, all members present, we have a quorum. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor Troy, make a motion to approve. The minutes for city council meeting on December the 12th and also the special meeting held December 23rd of 2024.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Tobias, second by Mayor Protem, that we approve the minutes as presented. Is there a discussion on that motion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have four registered to speak. First up, Casey Landers.
Good evening. I'm Casey Landers. I'm a resident here in Kyle, and I'm also a philosophy professor at Texas State University, where I teach subjects like ethics and critical thinking. On my way into campus, I take Stagecoach south, and I pass by this beautiful and old oak tree that you all have voted to cut down. My hope is that this city finds a way to keep the tree where it is. As someone who teaches critical thinking, it strikes me that there is a false dichotomy presented about this tree. Either we move the tree with no guarantee that the tree will survive, or we cut down the tree to widen the road to make it safer. For anyone who's actually spent time at this tree, you can literally see that there is a third option. We can keep the tree where it is and widen the road at the same time. I implore the council to revisit and redraw the plans regarding the road and the vibe trail slated to go on the west side of Stagecoach. I think as intelligent and compassionate individuals who are willing to work together, we can come up with a creative solution, one that prioritizes the preservation of Kyle's history and greenery, of which this Stagecoach, so-called Porter Oak tree, being around 400 years old, is a perfect example. I propose that we highlight this tree as a focal point rather than as a nuisance or a problem. Perhaps we can put it in a so-called vibe spot in the vicinity, where folks like cyclists and walkers can revel in the tree's beauty and shade. There is an outpouring of support about this tree. On social media, at least 1,000 people have commented or liked in favor of saving this tree. Our online petition has garnered almost 1,000 signatures as well. When I am out at the tree, holding up a sign that says "Don't Cut Me Down," so many people honk. They wave, they give a thumbs up, or they stop to talk. One gentleman, for example, shared that he's been driving by this tree for 60 years, and he thinks it would be a shame to cut this tree down, to widen a road. In contrast to this exponential growth and change that our city experiences now, this tree is a steady fixture. A part of our deep roots to this land, Native Americans, conquistadors, Mexicans, Anglo-settlers, and freed slaves, all traveled through Kyle on Stagecoach, past this tree, on the Camino Real. We have an obligation, nay, the privilege, to look after this legacy. I hope that you will join us in this effort to preserve and protect it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Neil Stegall.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. Speaking as a planning and zoning commissioner, C4, want to speak to item 24 on the agenda this evening, and if you've not had the ability to do so at the time, I would urge you to review page two quickly, if not for this purpose, but, you know, before the item comes up. This regard regards an appeal to council regarding a planning and zoning commission, vote three to two, to turn down an applicant's request for revision to the building facade. Originally, we had approved a building facade in August of 2023, so it had been 16 months that had passed, and they wanted a revision regarding putting up overhead doors. They were not segmented glass or transparent materials, but all metal doors in the overlay zone. So, listening to what was said to us, we decided three to two to vote against making that facade change or allowing it. The three that voted for the refusal really held the position that there was no consistency here. We could have discussed that in August of 2023, and now the project's being completed, why now? And we wanted consistency. The two who voted against it, I think it would be fair to represent, they're saying they wanted to be practical in looking at what change was requested. The change was for all metal doors. Okay, so, in trying to have a discussion about this matter with the applicant, we were told that, first of all, it wasn't a problem, it was not their problem, that there was a difference between what they applied for in August '23 and December '24, that it was a mistake of the architect and the rendering had been wrong, which was frankly difficult for some of us to accept, that it had gone that long with no correction. Okay, second case, why would you not be able to rule on this? We were told, this is a PUD. You don't have real authority over this kind of change in a PUD. This garage door, it'd be justifiable to put up this kind of overhead door, all metal. Okay? When questioned on that, the second item was then, well, the overlay code lets us do this, you're not reading the code right, meaning the staff or us. Okay? And then the fourth point, this is just summarizing roughly in three minutes, was that we've already got the doors, and it's $175,000 bill to do anything different at this point in time. So, the problem was, there was just no room for us to work with this, given what we had been told, in our, the view of three of us. There were no ideas about mitigation or any kind of changes, and we would just urge the council to look carefully at this and look at page two, because this is one of these things, I'm afraid, is it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right, next up, Tracy Scheel.
My name is Tracy Scheel. I am a resident, but first of all, I would like to speak to you as the president of the HOA for Waterleaf Falls. I would like to say thank you to Mr. John Davis, our conservation director at the Parks Department. He has worked tireless with us in regards to a situation with feral hogs that we've been having coming out of Waterleaf Park, and, believe me, our residents in our neighborhood have not been making it very easy. You know, they've been tampering with it a little bit, and then, of course, New Year's Eve happened. And, yeah, that's my next item. If fireworks are going to be illegal in the city, please, let's, let's either do it or just say, forget it, okay? A lot of years, especially in Waterleaf, Waterleaf has been bad, do not get me wrong, but this year, I don't know where the people came up with the money for the professional-grade fireworks that were done this year. They were frequent and loud. We had some cannons going off in Waterleaf, and those poor hogs, I felt bad for them, you know? Besides all our pets, our vets, and our babies in the neighborhood, I was feeling bad for the hogs. And so, again, if we're going to say that fireworks are illegal, then we need to figure out a way to, you know, try to diminish that. And as a former P&amp;Z commissioner, I was one of the denying votes to that, the garage doors, and so I agree with Mr. Stegall in regard to what he was saying and, you know, how he paraphrased that. And last but not least, and I was going to come to a meeting before Christmas, so this is kind of my Christmas wish, I know I've mentioned this to a couple of you, the right lane on 150, turning, coming westbound, turning north onto IH 35. When you guys go to TechStut and try and get that easement for 158, can we try to make that a right turn only lane, please? Because people love to just jump into that lane to get around all the people going straight, and jump in and try and, you know, and then that just blocks that lane and just makes that lane even longer and longer, especially in the morning. As a matter of fact, I was coming here for a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I saw a Dollar General truck do it, so, please, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scheel. Next up is Paige Giordano.
Thank you, council, mayor, Mayor Protem, for hearing me today and considering my comment on this chilly night. My name is Paige Giordano. I am a resident of Kyle, and I'm here to talk to y'all about rethinking and revoting on the old Stagecoach 400-year-old tree. It was lovingly named the Porter Oak by the community with a ton of support, as Casey mentioned earlier, online and in person, with honks, waves, people stopping. I've been out there a few days, and the energy is just amazing. That tree is gorgeous, it's huge. The diameter is 60 inches with a circumference of 180 inches, and I believe that Kyle should have more ordinances for its trees to protect trees of this large nature. When considering the options for widening the road that it sits on, the council only considered two options, either move the tree somewhere else or chop it down and create something out of it. I don't think those are the two options that we have. There's ample room on the other side of the road to expand it into more lanes. I've heard there's space going to be used for the vibe trail, but I think it's worth looking into the design and working with the contractors and city designers and planners and thinking a little bit harder on what we could do to save something that is literally Kyle heritage and be proud of it. And, and I think the Porter Oak is worth curving the road. People go through that road very quickly. It's a pinch point, as I've seen some people call it. They slow down so other cars can go through, but I've seen people go through literally at like 60 miles an hour while out there, and it's unsafe. So, curving the road would make them go slower anyway, which would make it more safe for the subdivisions on each side. I will continue to protest its removal, and my hope is that the city will work more closely to design the developing city with nature in mind and with harmony in mind, because it's important to remember that we think humans are above everything else, but we're also a part of the ecosystem at large and the biomes that the earth houses. I think we should have pride in our old growth trees and value them as priceless. Any price to redesign the road or to preserve it is worth it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all the citizen comments forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Hello, my name is Sandy Gonzalez, and I'm also a resident of Kyle, and I'm also here, just like the other folks, to speak on behalf of coming up with a different plan to save the tree. That tree is irreplaceable, just like many others that have already been cut down when other subdivisions have been built. I was there Sunday, I mean, I drive through that road frequently, so it's not the first time, but I was there Sunday, and I did see how people use, most people do slow down when they approach the tree, but there are several folks that are not going to slow down, and if you widen that road, you're only going to encourage people to speed up in that residential neighborhood, because that's exactly what happened when 1626 was expanded. People tried to drive 80 to 90 miles an hour on that road during rush hour, so that, you know, that's exactly what's going to happen on that road. Second, I know y'all want to have one lane plus a middle lane, but where the oak is at, there is absolutely no need for a middle lane, because there is nothing to turn to. If you turn, you're actually going to be crashing into people's houses and backyards or into that retention field that's on the other side. So, it's very possible that if you're going to do something to that road, that you can not only move it away from the tree, but you can also remove the middle lane, come to just the two lane, and then expand it back, because that's exactly what happens on Highway 21 headed north right before you get to the Bonton, because I do drive that in that direction at times. So, it is possible to do that. And in addition, you have a plan. Nothing's set in stone. It's just a plan that you can change at this point, and I recognize that it will cost money, but it's going to be a whole lot less than destroying something that is absolutely priceless. And in addition to that, since it's not just about that tree, it's also about coming up with a comprehensive plan to preserve the heritage trees that are left in this community, because Houston has one, Austin has one, Grapevine has one, I'm sure there are lots of other cities that have comprehensive plans, and Kyle has over 60,000 people already, so we should be having policies that are more evolved to account for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Yvonne Kell. While many individuals are here today to discuss the fate of the tree and as I stand in solidarity with them.
Sorry.
That's a sign. I believe the real issue extends beyond this single matter. It centers on the urgent need for leadership that can genuinely reflect the best interests of our residents, leadership that we can trust. Many residents feel not only misrepresented but also burdened by our elected officials and administrative leaders who fail to embody our community's morals and values. Over the last year, our council has consistently supported and financially rewarded a city manager who diverted from the personnel policy, overlooked and concealed instances of sexual misconduct, and most recently breached our Texas Constitution by allowing a council member-elect to perform elected duties before taking the required oath of office. We must ask ourselves, what does this say about our governance of our city? I urge each of you to reflect on this. If these events were happening in another city, what would your reaction be? If you were not complicit in allowing this to occur, how would your voice, your concerns? Would you truly want to live in a city where these actions were tolerated by those you trusted to elect to serve you? It's time for us to demand accountability and ensure that our city reflects the values of its residents. Let us remember that our community thrives on integrity, transparency, and accountability. Each of you play a vital role in shaping our city's future. You must hold yourselves and each other to the highest standards. Together, you can create a city where every resident feels heard, valued, and heard and valued. Moving forward, I ask each of you to commit to serving our community with honor and respect. The choices you make today will define your legacy, so please choose wisely. As I discussed the need for accountability and the importance of our values, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the words I shared during my last elected meeting, especially for those who were not present. To staff, I ask that you always remember who it is you serve and why. I believe many of us share a common goal, which is to foster a city that prioritizes the well-being of its residents and to be one that we can proudly represent. Moving on from my leadership, I hope I have inspired you to keep your values and morals in clear view and to allow them to guide your decisions. Trust me when I say, you will never go wrong by doing what's right, and I ask that you save the tree. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Mayor, city council.
Please state your name.
And I want to wish you guys a happy new year, and I know you guys can be addressing a lot of multimillion-dollar projects. I know it takes a lot of effort, and I used to do it when I used to work for Verizon as well, so I just wanted to wish you guys the best of luck in this new year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, thank you. Seeing none, the citizen comments will now be closed. Next up is agenda order. Does anybody have any items they wish to remove or move? I have one, I'd like to bring the Charter Review Commission up towards the front, if that's okay with everyone else. Is there any other items you want to move around? All right, if there are no objections, we'll bring up agenda item number 20, consider approval of a resolution to appoint seven qualified voters nominated by city council to the Charter Review Commission and establishing the charge of the commission. Sorry if I got you, if you weren't ready for that, Jesse, but thank you.
No problem at all. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we, I have a resolution for the Charter Review Commission, to appoint the Charter Review Commission. Is this our clicker? Okay. For anyone watching that doesn't know, the Charter Review Commission is appointed every five years, and the last time the commission was appointed was in 2020, so it's 2025, it's time to appoint the commission. The commission is appointed in a very specific way. Each council member appoints one person, and that, those seven appointments become the Charter Review Commission, and the only qualifications of those appointees is that they must be registered voters and residents of the city. Those appointees are here tonight in a resolution, and the council will vote on that resolution to appoint that Charter Review Commission. It should be noted that all council members have made their appointments, and they have been qualified as registered voters and residents of the city. Just a quick timeline on the process, so the commission convenes, once the commission convenes, they have six months, according to charter, to review and provide the recommendations to city council. The city council gives them a charge. In the past, the charge has been to look through the entire charter itself and give recommendations to council. The timeline there on the right shows that in January, that's currently where we are right now, we will make the commission appointments, and we'll have a kickoff meeting in January, and then those six months, January through June, we'll hold the meetings with the commission, and then the commission will present its recommendations to the city council, and the city council will take those recommendations and discuss it and then make a recommendation to staff to put in July and August, to put on the ballot for November of 2025. All the meetings of the Charter Review Commission will be held according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, and this is the default charge that staff has put together. It's kind of a overarching charge for the commission to look through the entire charter as it has been historically done. It is completely up to the council if they would like to make a more specific charge to the committee, but this is what's written into the resolution right now. Staff also has some improvements, clarifications, cleanup proposals that they will bring to the commission as well as they meet, and they will also bring those to council at the final presentation for council to consider. So, that's a little bit of a history and where we're at right now. These are the appointments that have currently been made. They've all been qualified from city council. It's completely up to city council if there's any changes, to discuss it now and make those changes, or to approve the resolution, and we will get the committee put together and the process started. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jesse. Does anybody have any comments or anything they wish to add? The only thing I want to say is I think it's a fantastic panel. I think everybody's nominees are pretty well thought out. We have several members who were formerly on the council and/or were a part of the initial founding of the charter or some of the major amendments that have been made through the years, and so I think they're going to do a great job. You're going to have a panel of veterans, so I think that's going to be pretty good, as well as some folks with a lot of energy and fresh ideas, so it should be a good time. Any further discussion? Councilor Tobias.
Yeah, I second that, because the names that I see here are people that have lived in Kyle for many years, and you have a lot of years of experience on here, mayor, and that's a, that's a good, good sign, and I know they're going to do a good job. They're going to dissect this review and look through it very well, so I do feel that this is a heavy roster of experience and great to see it coming forward.
Yeah, I'd just like to say it looks like we're going to have an all-star team here. Get ready for the best charter that we've ever had.
We already have the best charter.
Well, not after this one.
All right, anyone else? Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by mayor, second by councilor Heiser. Is there discussion on the motion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item number three, appointments, consider appointing Victoria Vargas to Hayes-Caldwell Economic Development Partnership to replace Mayor Travis Mitchell. I've been talking to Victoria about this for a while. The Economic Development Partnership is an important board. It represents the regional economic development workings of this particular organization. They're over San Marcos, Kyle, Buta, as well as Hayes and Caldwell counties. They have a very large board. It meets during the day, once a month, I believe. They are very, it's a very involved board. Jennifer Storm is the economic development coordinator for the city of Buta. She is on that board, and I actually even got a chance to talk to her today. I think that having Victoria there from a professional standpoint to represent the city's interests is probably better than me, because I can't make all of the meetings, and I know that Victoria will represent us better than me, so I wanted to actually put forward her name. This is the time of the year where they're asking for nominations, and I just wanted to open that up for discussion and see if anyone had any thoughts or feedback. All right, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number three.
Second.
Motion by mayor, second by mayor Protem. Is there discussion on the motion? Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item four, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding a future land use petition for a 175-acre property located near the intersection of East FM 150 and State Highway 21. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, mayor and council. This item is honestly a new process for us here at the city of Kyle. We have a future land use plan that was adopted in January last year. It's our comprehensive Plan 2030. With that, everything within the city, as well as the ETJ, is assigned a future land use category, and the applicant that's coming before us this evening is looking at maybe doing something different than what's on the adopted future land use plan. So, with that, we're looking at doing an amendment process, which would be required before they truly develop the property, which is kind of represented by the second line on the map there, but we thought we would start out with this petition process for them to showcase what they're trying to do on the property there, get some feedback from you on council, and then if you choose to accept the petition, they would then proceed with the true route of development on the property. So, future land use plan amendments should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. It should really look at, you know, how the changes that they're going to be doing are affecting the area. affecting the area. Is the necessary infrastructure there? Is this project better than what the future land use plan originally identified? What's the impacts? So, this is really kind of a series of questions to help guide you with your decision-making process on kind of evaluating this plan and whether or not you think it would be advantageous to us in Kyle. So, the case before you this evening is really they're looking, seeking feedback for a potential future land use plan amendment through this petition process. It's for 175 acres. It's located near the intersection of 21 and FM 150, and then the comprehensive plan for this area really had it as industrial warehouse, and then they're proposing to modify that 175 acres and really kind of breaking it down into a couple of different categories of keeping some industrial warehouse, but then adding some urban mixed use, which would allow some multifamily development, and then also adding a little bit more to the commercial. So, this is a map that really kind of showcases, I've highlighted it in yellow on the kind of the south, very south edge corner of our ETJ of the site. Again, it's industrial warehouse, and again, this is what the future land use plan map looks like. So, kind of focusing in now on what the existing future land use plan is, highlighted there in yellow is the 175 acres. It's adjacent to some urban mixed use, as well as some regional commercial currently, and then this would be their proposal. So, they're looking at taking 132 acres from the industrial warehouse and turning it into urban mixed use, and then adding six and a half acres to the regional commercial.
Melissa, I'm sorry to interrupt, but so can you go back one slide? The industrial warehouse that's currently there, that's its current zoning, or is that what it shows in the land use plan?
Correct.
All right, so what is it currently zoned?
So, I believe this is not within the city limits right now. So, future developments would be, look at the land use first, then come back with zoning and plating and all of that other stuff for development.
Okay, well, then that's kind of what I was thinking, but the follow-up question is if we amend our land use plan in order to consider a particular proposal, and then we decide that, and then the proposal doesn't make, then it opens up the gate for future... We can't tie the future land use plan amendment to this particular plan, or maybe a better way to say it, is this all coming to us at the same time?
It would.
Annexation, zoning, development agreement, so we could consider it all, and what you're asking us is to allow for that to happen, essentially.
Yes, so this is a precursor kind of to that, to see if council and the decision-makers are open to seeing kind of this change in the land use in this area. And then, you're right, the applicant has a presentation that they'll be talking about a little bit after this, and they can highlight, but it would be, they would piggyback those items to bring them in together, both the true future land use plan amendment, as well as the annexation and the zoning to support this development.
Well, do we need to see their overall proposal now? Are we going to see it later if we want to allow, basically allow them to make a proposal to us?
Yes, so the applicant is here, and they're showcasing you what their design and dreams are now, and then they would refine. If you accept, I would say you have three options. You can accept the petition saying, yes, I really like this plan, I like this element and that element, please proceed with applying for a future land use plan amendment, or you can provide any other feedback to give the applicant really kind of a good case of where you guys see this going for this development in this area.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, honestly, I'm glad to see something coming forward. I was never in agreement of making this a land use industrial. I just saw us throwing trucks on 150 when this first came to council years ago. We approved the land use. I never was a fan of making this area industrial. I think we were missing out on a gem, and that's 150 with the expansion of the airport. This is going to be our next retail area, so making this industrial was really dumb. I'm just going to be honest about it, and we need to make sure we look at this and come up with a use that's going to be better for the area, especially when we're talking about, you know, what do we want to see on 150? I want to make sure that we're putting the right plan in there and getting something that's going to have some retail in there for our residents, but also a good land use. I mean, just putting trucks and warehouses on an area that's probably going to be booming soon because of the 150 and the airport expansion, everything else expanding. Have you seen Ulande how they're expanding as well? We definitely need more retail in this area. This is our next commercial hub for retail, so we definitely need to keep an eye on this area.
Okay. I guess my feedback is, for me, I'm open to the discussion, but what I don't want to do is go through their entire development plan now, then start it, and then by the time it gets back to us, we're going to basically have to re-discuss it. It's going to be some time, I think, before all of that gets back to a point where we can look at it again, so.
Absolutely.
I'm just trying to save us a little time.
So, I mean, the reason why we have a future land use plan is because that is what you hope your zoning comes in at, right? Your new zoning and your new development would be compliant with the land use. So, right now, what the applicant's asking for is not compliant with what the existing comprehensive plan says.
Right.
So, that's why they're kind of showcasing and coming in with this, doing a litmus test to really kind of see where you at council are open to that, to then give staff direction as well as them to refine anything that you see for that. But you're right, this is a precursor to that process. I do think there's going to be some refinement for it, and I can turn it over to the applicant if you kind of want to see generally where they're looking at the direction for it now.
We can. I just, what I'm saying is that the future land use has to consider a lot of different possibilities, and what they're specifically proposing could be something that we could take up at the time that we make the vote, and so the question I'm asking is, are we open to allowing them to bring something that considers those land uses? And if the answer is yes, I would prefer that we say, keep working on the project, let's see what happens, and bring it all forward at the same time. That's just my opinion. Does anybody want to go through the development and discuss it now?
Yep. Well, I want to at least go through this presentation.
Okay.
Right, that staff has prepared.
Oh, the JD's market.
No, no, the one that staff has prepared. Is this theirs, or is this staff's?
So, this is, I was just going to finish up the staff, and then I do have the applicant, so they could talk a little bit about their project and why they're choosing, or why they're requesting to do the changes and amendments to what the adopted comprehensive plan is, and how that mixed use fits their vision and idea for the project is really where we're at. And you're right, Mayor, this is a precursor, so it doesn't change the comprehensive plan tonight. That still absolutely will have to go through an ordinance amendment process, but it does give kind of a green light, red light on whether or not we're even open to looking at a potential change to the comp plan for the land use.
My only pushback would be to say that maybe we're open to this particular mixture, and it will depend on what's in there.
Yep.
But if what we see right now is something that we don't necessarily like, then maybe that the feedback comes differently, and so they don't get that chance for us to actually negotiate on the specific layout of the project that they want. So, I'm trying to take your bigger question and make it a little question. Are we open to this particular combination of uses on this land? If the answer is yes, then we can work on and bring forward a specific proposal along with that amendment, and you'll know, the applicant will know, that it's not the land use that might be an issue when it gets brought up. It might be the particulars of something.
Absolutely, and I think you have the opportunity to share all that, for sure.
Okay.
Do you want me to continue? Just real quick on this, I was just kind of trying to show a side-by-side of what our existing future land use plan there is on the left, and then what our proposed future land use plan is, what they're proposing on the right. I will say, back to Councilmember Rizzo, this was really looked at in the comprehensive plan to be the industrial warehouse. I think they were looking at the major corridors of it, proximity to the regional airport, and then just honestly, the major roadways in this area. So, that's why we were kind of focused on that at that point in time. Industrial warehouse is a big majority in this area. It's a little over 1,500 acres of the future land use plan, and in this area alone, 684 acres is kind of that industrial warehouse category, so, and 403 acres is in this area.
Yeah, usually you put your industrial in the back, and you put your retail in the front. This puts the industrial in front, so that's where I have the issue, around your major corridor, which is 150 and 21. So, putting further back, I would be okay with, but putting it right on the corridor where you're missing out with all the developments going on around us, I mean, just in San Marcos, down the street there on 21, and then you're looking at what Hayes County has and what Ulande has, all the homes going in, I mean, people are looking for retail, and this is going to be a great hub for retail.
Well, to that point, that's a great, that's kind of what I'm trying to say, is there's some specifics. So, when, if they're considering a future land use plan, can't we just say that industrial warehouse is an option on the whole thing? The urban mixed use is an option, and the retail is an option, so that they're allowed to make a presentation to us? We don't have to even decide that to that level of, because I agree with Mayor Protem on that, and so I'd be wanting to move the maps and lines around, but really, we're just wanting to kind of bless the particular layout.
Yes, that you're open to changing the land use category in this area.
Right, so, but if you go through the land use, is it going to be specifically tied to the map you just showed?
No.
Or is it going to make all of them available?
They'll have to come back with, I would say generally, it would, with your feedback, I would say generally in compliance with the feedback that you give them this evening.
But even still, so I guess what I would say is the feedback should be that they're allowed to make a proposal to us on this. We'll carry it forward so that they can make their proposal, and then when the proposal, when the specifics of the proposal come, then we can have the more granular look.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Then we, Mayor, then we can break down the parcels, like parcel one, parcel three, parcel four, parcel two, because, yeah, I mean, we all are in agreement that this would be a game changer for retail or mixed use for residents in the area, but I think the layout is what you're also questioning, Mayor, is like, should we be talking about that now? Let's say if we decide, if we say, well, we want the industrial warehouse in the back and the parcels up front. And so, originally was warehouse. I remember having discussion years ago on this. I guess the question on my end is, what changed from them wanting to have it all as industrial to now going with this? Is it because of the climate?
Well, I have that applicant here to...
Well, industrial is what we said. It's not what the applicant, this is what the applicant's looking at.
This is what the applicant's...
The reason this is before us is they can't make the proposal to us unless we give them authorization, because it's not allowed in the comprehensive plan.
Exactly.
So, all this vote should be right now is to allow for them to make the proposal to us, because they're going to have to carry an extra item forward, which is an amendment to our comp plan.
Yes.
Yes, all right, and just to provide a little bit more clarification, I think they're just looking for a general read. Is this something that you're open to, as Melissa pointed out? And if the answer is no, well, then there's no reason to spend all the time and money and expense of going through all those things, and so if there's something that you're open to, the exact layouts and footprints will change, but that's the, the general desire is to give you that option to have a little bit of that feedback before we go through that entire process.
But we can't, we can't up or down it.
It's not meant for a vote tonight, Mayor. It's meant for a general direction of, is this something that you would consider? That's why it's supposed to be that way.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Four.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion on the motion? So, you're going to, I don't know where the applicant is. Normally, I would be looking. So, what I would say is, just, we're going to be open to it, but we'll have to see on the layout, but the uses that you're proposing, I think, are all something that we would consider with your application. Sure, yeah.
My name is Erbey. I work with Mike Wolf and Stuart Williams. Thank you so much for your attention. So, we are trying to create something that you guys will like, so we're open to not keeping, because we even have some industrial, as you guys saw, we had some industrial, but we were happy to make that more commercial, that's fronting the FM 150, or have more high-density mixed use, so we're open to working with you guys on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Are we going to give them any feedback up here?
The feedback we're giving is that the land uses they're asking are something we would consider.
I mean, I had questions about the infrastructure out there. I mean, is that getting too far into this?
That's what I'm saying. That's, I have questions, too, and thoughts we all do.
Quality of life.
Right, but we don't, we don't have DAs. We're not negotiating all those points.
So, let's not do that just yet.
This is just kind of saying, let's go.
We're interested in changing...
We're interested.
But we're not...
We're not stuck on warehouse. All right, any further discussion? Hold, it's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right, next up is the consent agenda, the items five through 15. Does anybody have any questions or have any items they'd like to have pulled and looked at more specifically? Councilmember Harris.
Just to clarify, item fifteen will need to be pulled from consideration.
Five through fourteen.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I do have questions on seven, eight, and sixteen. The question is not major.
Sixteen is not on concern.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, just seven and eight?
Yeah.
All right, anyone else? Motion.
Five.
You said five?
Five, 12, and 13. But I'll keep them brief.
All right, anyone else? Motion.
Motion, Mayor, I'd like to give the motion to approve Agenda Item Six, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve consent Agenda Items Six, Nine, Ten, Eleven, and Fourteen. Is there discussion on that motion? Hold, it's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item Five, First Reading. Consider approval of an ordinance, omitting Chapter Seventeen, Floods of the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances, to adopt the new flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map, and add wording to Chapter Seventeen to comply with applicable and current state statutes and federal regulations. This item is sponsored by Mr. Barbara. Mr. Zuniga pulled it. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just wanted to see, is this just setting a new baseline, Leon? Baseline level for the flooding? Is that, is that what this item is for?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Leon Barba City Engineer. That is correct, Councilmember. It's a new floodplain map that we're wanting to adopt.
So, just the questions is like, what are we doing, I guess, to protect our critical assets in floodplains? I mean, as a city, do we try to elevate generators, have these, it's surrounding the floodplain area, so I'm just looking at our floodplain resiliency plans. You know, do we have that in mind when we, when we look at our infrastructure?
Councilmember Smith Watson, I was building official, but the answer is yes. We do have requirements in the building codes that require you to build at certain elevations. If it's a known elevation, you have to build above a certain elevation. You have to make sure that these critical features are not in the floodplain, so we do have building codes that cover that.
Okay.
And if we also have, as you all know, we have the buffer that we try to keep people from building in, that buffer that's right next to creeks or whatever, so we do have a buffer.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to kind of hear, get a good sense of that, that we're planning as climate changes and we have more, you know, stormwater runoff, that we're ahead of it so that more and more of our neighborhoods don't enter the floodplain areas.
That is correct, Councilmember. As we, as most everybody knows, Atlas 14, we had a big impact on the floodplains, and we're abiding by those rules and regulations.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Five.
Motion by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve Agenda Item Five. Is there discussion on the motion? Hold, it's a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is Agenda Item Seven. Consider approval of Task Order Number Two with Sean Bergen Polk for the Design Services of Waterleaf segment of the Vibe Trail, an amount of $519,642. This item is presented by Ms. Trulove, is pulled by Ms. Harris. Ms. Harris, you have the floor.
I have the question. So, the $519,642 is just design of this 1.57-mile portion of the Vibe Trail by Waterleaf Park?
Correct.
Okay, and then, okay, that was my main question, is just for the design phase, no construction in that? no, no construction in that? That just seemed high for design only. And then my other question relates to more than just that portion of the Vibe Trail, but just for some information, there are still several parks that don't have restrooms. Some of them, the Vibe Trail goes by, like Cool Springs. Are there plans to integrate restrooms in those parks that do not have them, like Button Creek Park by the Bird Blind and, and the Wildflower Loop and Cool Springs?
I'm gonna, excuse me, Rosie TruLove, Director of Administrative Services. I did want to answer your first question, just to call out what's in the presentation, which the $519,000 includes 100% design for 1.57 miles of trail. It also includes construction phase services and geotechnical phase services, or geotechnical services. So it is more than just design. It should take us through construction of the contract. And then I will let Parks Director David Lopez address your question on restrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Dr. Harris, to answer your question on restrooms, we plan on installing restrooms at Button Creek Park within this calendar year, actually probably within this quarter. And also we have some other restroom projects coming up later this year with Heroes Memorial as well as Mary Kyle Hartson Park.
Yeah, but Cool Springs is not on that list?
Cool Springs has a restroom. It's just, it's down right now. There was some damages done probably several months back, but we're working on replacing some fixtures. There's a, it's on the, I guess, the northern section of, of, of the park.
So the section that's closest to 150 by that lake there?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the two lakes that are by the parking lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item number seven.
Our motion by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Mayor Protem, that we approve agenda item seven. Is there further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item eight. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to accept a public safety alternate, alternate response team for mental health grant for the office of the Texas governor with a cyberne state crisis intervention program in the amount of $188,288, or $280. This item is presented by Chief, Ms. Harris, you have the floor.
Yes, I'm, I'm just a little, I just want some clarification. The grant is great. I have no objections to it, accepting that. But the, the budget to me was a little unclear, what that's really going to cover. So it's going to cover one licensed mental health professional, is that right?
Yes, the, the grant covers the one position. It covers contractual services that include training from the Metals Foundation. It also covers equipment and travel, training, and supplies and, and other operating expenses.
Okay. Is the local project going to be designed by us or is it pre-designed by the state?
No, it's going to be designed by us. It's going to work in conjunction with our two mental health officers. And if, if you remember, y'all kindly approved a similar position. We had applied for this grant before the budget. And so there will be two positions, mobile crisis care coordinators assigned to our mental health unit.
Great. And do these coordinate with Hill Country, MHDD?
Absolutely. They will work very closely with all those organizations, health providers, other law enforcement agencies, and other professional services.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Can I, Assistant Chief, do you mind laying out like how, because this is a new thing for the city of how these crisis coordinators are going to work alongside police, the police department officers or on duty officers to help free up the time that they're spending out in the field?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes. This is, these are new positions for our department. As y'all remember, we already have two mental health officers. These, the public safety alternate response team, that is like the umbrella. That is, that is a group of trained professionals and they will work closely with our mental health officers and there'll be an additional support component to our patrol officers. And so a lot of these calls don't require a uniformed police officer and they may not even require a mental health officer. So they will help be a support unit and they will try to do follow-up and they'll do home visits and follow-up over the phone and, and they'll provide services and resources to, to these clients that, that the officer, that will not need an officer. And of course, there will be nonviolent, non-emergency, so they, they won't, we're not going to put them in a situation where they have to respond to an active call.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited about how this is going to work.
Yeah, we are too.
We already got a motion on that? Or no?
No.
Okay, motions?
I'd like to make motion that we accept the, item number eight, to accept the public safety alternative response team for mental health grant from the office of the Texas governor.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Harris, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve agenda item eight. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item number 12. Consider approval of task order number seven with WGI Inc. for the preparation of the final design plans and construction services of the I-35 northbound frontage road at County Road 158 acceleration and deceleration lanes in the amount of $245,080. This item is presented by Ms. TruLove. Mr. Zuniga, you pulled it, you have the floor.
Yeah, Ms. TruLove, if you want to go ahead and just present it, it's pretty short.
Sure.
Because I, I need the imagery of the road.
That's fine. If we get into technical questions about the road, then I have Leon here to help me out. So it's been decided that deceleration lane and acceleration lane are needed on the I-35 frontage road near County Road 158. The city will need to work with Tech dot to make improvements to the northbound frontage road of I-35. The northbound frontage road currently has two lanes plus a shoulder on each side and County Road 158 connects to the frontage road at an angle. No additional right of way is going to be required. The proposed project is to widen the access road to accommodate a right turn deceleration lane onto County Road 158 and a right turn acceleration lane onto the frontage road. High level estimated cost of construction is 1.5 million. The cost is based on preliminary analysis and is subject to change with detailed investigation and plan development. The contract is a task order with WGI in the amount of $245,000. The primary scope of work includes a schematic design, or preliminary schematic design, design phase services in coordination with Tech dot, a topographic survey, environmental investigation, bid phase services, and construction phase services. So this should be the full suite of design work for this particular project. And we recommend approval of the task order. But I'll go back to the pictures, in case that's where you wanted to ask questions.
So we're looking at improving the shoulder that is seen there where the large trees are. So I want to make sure we keep, we don't, you know, do anything to disturb those trees. But you've got that shoulder and you're going to go further down, right? So the, the first slide, didn't you have the, that one? So are we doing that whole stretch from that, what was shown in the picture, all the way down to that Dairy Queen? Because that looks like.
Just the intersection is what Leon is saying.
So 1.5 million just for an intersection? Because is, is that what the scope of this work is?
For the acceleration and deceleration lane in that intersection of I-35 and County Road 158.
Do you have any idea how many, excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yeah, well, the other thing I didn't see was, I guess, lighting that maybe at that, where the stop sign is and you, and you turn, like, so that road is not going to be widened, the County Road 158 there. We're not talking about widening that piece only.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you have more questions?
So my question would just be that we, you know, look at the, that hopefully the shoulder doesn't, you know, disturb the, these natural trees there, but I, I also, I didn't know how much of it we were actually going to build. And it just seems, seems like a high price. I know this is the Tech dot coordination, but for a small piece of XL, DCL lands.
Mayor and Council, Leon Barba, City Engineer. One of the plans that we want to do here is to straighten out that intersection, make it more of a 90-degree turn. It just so happens that that corner right there to the south of that intersection is Tech dot property. They don't want us to take the whole tract with that improvement there, so we're going to try to limit it. But one of the issues that you have with this particular intersection is that tree with the shrubbery that's around it. We've gotten complaints about people not being able to see. As you all know, in this, it's section of I-35, it's 55 miles an hour and we're lucky to see anybody driving 55. They're usually going faster than that. So getting out of that particular intersection is pretty tough in the morning, trying to get out, or in the afternoon, trying to get out in that lane of traffic. So that's the reason this project was developed, to help people be able to get out safely as best as we can.
Oh, so from that little piece, get out safely?
Yes, sir.
To go downhill, because that goes downhill.
That's correct, yes. So we're going to do just deceleration lane, just give people a way to get off safely and an acceleration. We're looking at an acceleration lane there also. One of the dilemmas that we have, we want to make sure that we don't encumber that property with too much of a decent acceleration lane. I've already been in contact with the owner of the property and explained what we're trying to do there, so we're working very closely with that owner also.
So if you, if you are coming off of that, off the highway, and you're going to get to 158, you will have a little shoulder to get into 158 safely?
That's correct, yes.
And that's what you call the DCL lane?
DCL, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Yes, definitely those are needed because they are dangerous and there is a lot of darkness, visibility issues there in that, in that intersection, in that corner.
Councilmember Harris.
Do you have any idea how many feet of pavement this is?
I'd say 600 to 700 in each, in each, each, each DCL lane, acceleration lane. I'd say about 600 on each one, say 1,200.
1,200, thank you.
But we'll have to work out those details with Tech dot. And that one and a half million, that's our initial estimate. I thought it was kind of high, but we won't find out till later when we get our preliminary engineering report, we'll get a better number on that, so hopefully.
Yeah, for 1,200 feet, that seems a little high.
Do you think you'll run into any utilities? Sorry, sorry for interrupting.
There is an electrical box, I think, there in one of the corners that I'm aware of, but we'll just have to work around those. One of the other things that we were considering to try to keep the cost down is possibly, there's Mike Murphy here to possibly help us with doing some of the construction. So we were thinking about doing that to try to keep the cost down.
In-house, yes.
Councilmember Harris, do you have any further? All right, Mayor Protem.
That's what I was going to ask, is this something we can do in-house, try to keep the cost down? The other thing, Councilmember Zuniga brought up a good point, was lighting in that area. Something I wanted to bring up as well, because I've driven that road quite a few times. I, I go down 158, so I wanted to make sure that the intersection is lit, because it, it is really dark. So this way, when they're turning in, they can really see it.
We will do that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember McKinney.
Yeah, I've used this intersection both getting off and on the, the access road. And I see this as a, a very positive way of making it a much safer intersection.
Anyone else? Motions?
Like to make a motion to approve agenda item 12.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember McKinney, to approve agenda item 12. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, real quick, so you're saying the road's going to lead into there, through there, on that side, it's going to be widened up, correct? On the, the, when you act, when you get off the highway and you go through 158, is that going to be widened up right there on the corner? Like on the, on the very bottom photo?
Accelerate and decelerate.
It's going to be widened to decelerate and accelerate. Yes, it will be widened.
Okay. So are, is any of those trees need to go as well?
That one tree that you're looking at there may have to go.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 13. Consider approval to award an agreement for the finishing of the interior of 208 and 246 Republic Drive Buildings to Vaughan Construction LLC in an amount of 1.1 million 89,485. This is Ms. TruLove's item. Councilmember Zuniga, you have the floor.
You can present it again. I want to make my question, please.
Sure. So we'll go through the background, project information, scope and cost, our timeline, our sourcing information, and the options. City purchased these two buildings at 208 and 246 Republic Drive back in November of this year. Again, two buildings, they're about 6,600 square feet each. The programming needs for the buildings include office space, workstations, conference rooms, some classrooms, a parks maintenance garage, maintenance garage, and a break room. The scope will include door divider, doors, divider walls, drop ceilings, some electrical work, finishes for paint, restroom tile, carpeting, and things of that nature with, and construction administration for a cost of $1,189,485. We anticipate awarding the, the construction contract today, mobilizing in the next week. It will take nine to 11 weeks to complete construction and that would allow us to have move in by April of this year. We're purchasing this through the Omnia Purchasing Cooperative and we recommend approval of the contract.
It's fast.
Yeah, so there was no bid for it, right?
No, this is through a co-op.
Okay. So when you said the, the programming needs, is that all that we're getting for this amount of money? The offices, workstations, all of this? Will this be a complete finish-out, turnkey? The, the guys, the parks and recs can move in?
Yes.
And no more HVAC work, plumbing work needed?
Not, not that we're anticipating right now.
Okay. Is that the condition right now that it's in?
That is my understanding.
Because that's, that's really nice, nice floors. So nice ceilings? So, yeah, I, I was kind of, I wasn't sure what we were doing with the 1.7 million? 1.8?
We're basically taking a building shell that is in various stages of finish-out and we're, we're finishing that finish-out that would allow us to operate as office space for our park staff.
So this will make them both functional?
Yes.
But they are functional now, right? Someone could.
They're functional, but there's no walls. There's no, it would be like if you scraped all of the insides out of this particular facility and just had, you know, walls and maybe some bathrooms. There's no ceilings there, so we'll have to add the drop ceilings. There's the, the tall ceilings, but all of the electrical work is visible. So it's taking, you know, what may kind of have a little bit of a warehousey feel to it almost, and turning it into more finished-out office space.
And do we have any plans for any exterior work? Is this, this is it?
Hmm.
Because I think that the general public wants to know what we're, what we're refurbishing and what we're getting, right? So.
Yeah, it's all interior work.
Okay.
So you have to keep in mind, it's going to be walls, it's going to be design, it's going to be electrical going through those walls, drop ceilings. So you've got your mechanical, you also have to run that. So you return air, everything, so there's going to be, it, it's going to add up to the price.
No, I think it's very valuable to do all this. I just want to make sure we are getting all of that and we're not just getting texture and paint and, you know, and it's already a finished building.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's by no means a finished space. It's inhabitable right now, but it, this will turn it into finished office space.
Okay.
Irish sprinklers and everything.
Yep. There, are they in there?
They're going to be need to be.
Some have to move sometimes. If you hadn't dropped ceilings, then you might have to drop them down.
Yeah, they got to be reconfigured just to accommodate officers.
Okay.[1621.45] That's all, that's all my questions.
Motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Zuniga, second by Mayor Proton that we approve Agenda Item 13. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Uh, I will note that on Agenda Items, uh, five and fourteen, we're both first reading. Does anyone have any objection to those items being finally passed? All right, seeing none, those items are finally passed. Next up is Agenda Item 16. Consider Approval of a Resolution Finding Public Convenience and Necessity in Authorizing Use of Eminent Domain to Condemn If Necessary a 1.565 acres in, uh, Fee Simple and .794 acre, uh, uh, Temporary Construction Easement. Both is described in Exhibit Four from Certain Real Property Owned by James P. Jansen and Peggy L. Jansen for the public use and purpose of construction of public right-of-way improvements and shared-use paths, including wastewater lines, reclaimed water lines and a portion of the Vibe Trail. Go ahead, Ms. Schmice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Schmice, the City Manager for the Record. Tonight, we have for you the North Trails Wastewater Interceptor Improvements Easements. Um, here's a background of the project. Um, we are planning various improvements to our existing wastewater reclaimed water infrastructure to accommodate projected future development and flows. And this, these improvements include, um, upgrading an existing twenty-four inch wastewater line to a thirty-six inch and then, um, upgrading an existing eight inch reclaimed water line to a twelve inch reclaimed water line. Currently, STV is the engineer on the project and they are finishing up a hundred percent design. The proposed alignment reroute along the Jansen property moves the utilities out of the residential backyards along Hyrras Street, which also helps out with our infrastructure. Um, to date, uh, we have, um, the easement width was designed to accommodate the construction of both the twelve inch reclaim line and the thirty-six inch wastewater line, future access and maintenance. We've coordinated with the Plum Creek Conservation District for ongoing requirements of the dam crossing and proposed easements. We've updated survey obtained during ninety percent design to capture dam spillway and Lehman Road improvements. And then, we've acquired, um, the permanent and temporary easements on the Walton, Texas LP piece of land. Here's the impacted parcels for you. Um, land along the Jansen property is proposed to be purchased for the North Trails Project and future city of Kyle Park Trail. The appraisal was ordered and it's now complete. We need fee simple and temporary construction easements within the Jansen property. For the fee simple, it's 1.565 acres. Temporary construction easement, it's 0.794 acres. So, summary, tonight, we are asking you to, uh, approve a resolution to declare public convenience and necessity for the project. Um, when you do that, then you find that this project is necessary to promote the public health, safety and welfare of the community and acquisition of the identified property is required to complete the project. And this provides you the authority to initiate eminent domain proceedings if necessary. Your options are to approve or deny, and the recommendation is to approve. Any questions?
Thank you, I do have a specific motion I have to bring forward. If there's no objection, I'm gonna go and do that now. I move that the city of Kyle authorize the use of power, of the power of eminent domain to acquire 1.565 acres of land in fee simple and a temporary construction easement over .794 acres owned by James P. Jansen and Peggy L. Jansen is described in Agenda Item 16 for the public use of constructing and operating utility infrastructure improvements, including wastewater lines and reclaimed water lines and also construction of a shared youth path, uh, as part of the city's Vibe Trail project. Do we have a second? All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Proton. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Tobias.
Have we've had conversations with the family on this and, and their feeling on it?
Yes, sir, we have, and we, um, are currently negotiating. We feel like we will be able to reach an agreement before we actually have to go into eminent domain.
Councilor Harris.
Pretty much the same question. I believe this is part of the original Lehman family and Jansen family.
It's the Jansen family, Leon.
It's the Jansen family? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
The creek runs through that property. There are springs in that creek there at that property. And it's a legacy property. It's, uh, our fam, that families have that property a long time. I just wanna assure that we are protecting their interest and that we do not impinge on any use of that property by the family.
Right, so we are, we are asking for easements for fee simple to occupy, um, the property with, with our wastewater line and our reclaimed water line and then a temporary construction easement to, um, do the necessary work. After it's all covered up, they shouldn't even know we're there anymore.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries six to one.
Oh, I, Mayor, I'm sorry, I think we need a roll call vote on that one.
I'm sorry, roll call vote, scratch that.
Brizzo? McKinney?
Aye.
Zuniga?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Tobias? Harris?
Yes.
All right, motion carries six to one, thank you. All right, next up is Agenda Item 17. Uh, Consider Approval of a Resolution Authorizing a Purchase Agreement with B Springs LTD Rafter Holdings LLC and GSP Conservation Investors LLC for attractive land of approximately 3.393 acres, uh, for a permanent utility easement, 1.4 acre, four, eight acres for a temporary construction easement in the amount of 726,864 dollars for the Cypress Road Regional Utility Project and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents. Uh, Ms. Schmice.
Good evening again. Um, this is where we were able to come to agreement with the property owner for acquisition of the property that we need for, um, the Clara Vista, um, the Clara Vista wastewater line, um, I'm sorry, water line. We have proposed a thirty-five foot wide easement to house a forest main as well as two additional utility lines anticipated in the future. Here's what the, uh, alignment of that line looks like. It follows and crosses Cypress Road to Center Street. Um, to date, the council has approved the alignment in April. Um, it's currently under design and appraisals have been completed for the utility easement. We reached agreement with parcel number two and a purchase agreement has been prepared for your consideration. Here is the easement that we need. It's, uh, 3.393 acres for permanent utility. And then, we also need 1.4 acres for temporary construction easement. Total price of the purchase is 726,864 dollars. Closing is expected on or before sixty days after full execution of the agreement.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schmice. Does anybody have any questions? Councilor Tobias.
Okay, so on this one here, you have reached an agreement with the property owners?
Yes, sir.
And they're in full support of what we're trying to do on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Motions? Make a motion to approve 17. All right, motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Councilor Harris that we approve Agenda Item 17. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero, thank you. Next up is Agenda Item 18. Consider Approval of a Resolution Authorizing a Purchase Agreement with Evelyn E. Nicholson, trustee of the Evelyn E. Nicholson Trust under 2005 Trust Agreement for attractive land of .06 acres, which includes the purchase of the house in an amount of 443,711 dollars 28 cents and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property. Ms. Schmice.
Good evening again. Uh, this is another example of where we were able to come to agreement with the property owner in acquiring the property that we need. Um, this is for the old Stagecoach project. Um, the purchase agreement is prepared to purchase the right-of-way tract that we need. It's 0.06 acres. But because the right-of-way goes through the home, we are also purchasing the home. Total price of the purchase is 443,771 dollars and 28 cents based on the appraisal and it includes fees.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this particular item? Councilor Harris.
Was the house occupied?
It did have a tenant. Um, you, you will be in the future approving a relocation package for that tenant, yes.
Which will be approximately, how much?
I can't re, I can't recall off the top of my head, but we have discussed it in closed session before.
So, plus a relocation package?
Yes.
And it's for .06 acres and the house?
And the house.
And the house will be torn down?
Yes, the house will have to be torn down.
Just seems to me that it's ironic that we're going to do this for this piece of property, yet we cannot talk about spending that kinda money on the tree. Just, just saying. I'm not opposed to what we're doing with this.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's for the property and.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm not opposed to, you know, if, if the property owners are satisfied and we're doing a relocation package for the tenant.
Yes, they were satisfied and they agreed to the purchase.
It just seems ironic to me.
Just a quick question.
Councilor Zuniga.
Amber, this is paid for through the road bond, right?
Correct, yes.
Now, the parcel above it, do we need any of that right-of-way? It just kinda, I'm kinda questioning, is this piece needed, you know? And we're gonna get another piece above that? Or is this just the only piece needed here?
No, that's not the only piece. We do need, um, some of the property to the plan north, um, this one.
So, the plan north is in the way?
You've also approved a PCN for that property to the north as well.
So, those little pieces, I guess, are in the path of the, of the roadway?
Correct.
What about to the south? To the south of, of that property? Is that, is that okay?
Um, I don't recall, I don't recall. I don't recall what we need to, to the plan south, but I do know we, we need some to the north.
Okay. I just wanted to, it's a very complicated matter, you know, when you're buying, when you're widening and building these roads that, you know, you, we see, you know, what has to be done to, to get that project finished.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Tobias.
So, out of this 443,000, is any of this money gonna be coming out of the bond that was assigned to Stagecoach as part of the land acquisition?
Yes, it will all be, um, coming out of that particular bucket of money.
But we don't have, so the property owner has agreed to, let's just say, this selling price, but we don't have a fee or an op, um, the amount for relocation?
It's not before you tonight, it will come before you. Um, and council's been briefed about it and it's based on, uh, federal and state laws and Relocation Act. But it will be coming back to you.
Cause my concern would be it'll come out to, let's say, an, an additional 400,000. So, you're looking at 800,000 just for this property.
Hang on, I need to, I need to clarify. This is, this is a direct transaction with the property owner. This is not imminent domain. So, the property owner who owns the property is choosing to sell the house to us directly. And so, their responsibility, they have responsibilities to the tenant, but that doesn't necessarily mean we are. So, if we're giving them relocation costs, then that would be, um, above and beyond. Or maybe that's something that was negotiated. But they're not being removed through this agreement from their property by us. They are, we are doing a transaction with the, with the owner of the property and making them whole, is what it seems to me like.
Correct.
Fair deal, no one's forcing anyone to do anything.
Correct, and while I can't remember the exact number, I can guarantee it will not be 400,000 dollars to relocate the tenant.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, I mean, that, that's what it is. I'm just, if, if there, if we're coming out and we're saying, let's just buy the property and, cause we're gonna need the, uh, the land usage for the additional roading. Again, why would we come back for relocation fees for them if there's, if we've already settled this price?
Well, it's required by federal law to, if, if a tenant is impacted, we are required to give them relocation assistance by law. And so, it's in addition to, um, this transaction price. Similar to some of the, the transactions that we did for the Quail Ridge project, so, Go Fourth Road. There was, there was relocation assistance provided to tenants. They were made whole and then there was also, uh, property transactions that occurred.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess, I, cause I'm looking at it again. Sorry, man, I don't want, so the other question is, are we only buying the .06 acres? Amber, not the whole other part of it, behind it?
Right, it's, it's just that, um, area shaded in green, but it takes the, it bisects the house.
So, who keeps the other, the other acreage?
The property owner.
The property owner, okay.
Yes.
Which very little use now with that, I mean.
Oh, no, they could, they get a, they get a lot without a house that, the property owner is gonna be coming out just fine.
Can they rebuild another home, I guess?
They could be rebuilding another home or possibly if they wanted to rezone it to a commercial property since they'll have access to.
I thought, I thought that was coming into the city's hands now, so the city has the whole little lot area.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It kinda feels like we should, a little bit, like the, the, the lot of the house that we're having to pay 400,000 dollars to remove should, the land underneath it should be ours.
I think we should get the whole thing, I mean, if we're.
It's governed by state law, I think, is what we're being told, so. And it's weighted in every, in the property owner and the tenant's favor here.
Right.
Yeah, state law doesn't prohibit cities from taking more than what they need.
Sure, okay, thank you for reminding me, yeah, thank you guys.
All right, motions?
No more comment on that, okay. Like to make a motion, from me, no more comment from me.
Eighteen. Eighteen.
To approve Agenda Item 18.
I'll second it.
All right, motion by Councilor Zuniga, seconded by Mayor Proton, we approve Agenda Item 18. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries six to one. Next up is Agenda Item 19. Consider Approval of a Resolution Authorizing a Possession and Use Agreement with East Cannon Partners, Inc., uh, related to the, uh, Fee Simple Acquisition of 2.51 acres of acquisition of easements of .48 acres in an amount not to exceed, uh, 1,151,994 dollars for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Project Right-of-Way and Arwa Water Facility Projects. Ms. Schmice.
I feel like this might be the, okay, here we go. Um, I was thinking it was the wrong presentation. Um, so this is for the Kyle Parkway Lehman Road Project. Um, it involves extending Lehman Road Northeast from Button Creek Road to Dacey Lane as a four-lane minor arterial. Additionally, Kyle Parkway will be extended to this new segment of Lehman Road also as a four-lane minor arterial. The total new roadway will cover 1.3 miles. This plan includes, um, two-lane roundabouts at the intersections of Kyle Parkway and Dacey Lane, Kyle Parkway with Lehman Road, Lehman Road with Bun Creek and Lehman Road with Dacey Lane. Acquiring the parcels are absolutely critical to the delivery of the Arwa Water Line. So, we're acquiring easements for Arwa as well as requiring the right-of-way that we need, uh, for the road. This parcel, um, the entire property is outlined in red. What we are asking for or requiring is shaded in blue. It's owned by East Cannon Partners Incorporated. The whole property is 4.99 acres. Fee simple, which means we're purchasing, is 2.51 acres and easement acquisition is 0.48 acres. It has one vacant manufactured home on the property currently. So, again, we're seeking to acquire, um, those acres in fee simple and, um, in temporary construction easements. We need it for the Arwa Water Facility projects. We've negotiated with the property owners on terms of a possession and use agreement to allow the city to begin work, city slash Arwa, to begin work on the projects during the eminent domain process as the parties have not yet agreed to terms for property acquisition. Um, this agreement will help to speed up the projects by allowing the city to begin work on the needed infrastructure prior to final property acquisition. And we do understand that Arwa has a schedule to start, oh, working on the property, um, as soon as Monday. So, this is very important, um, to acquire these parcels.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Schmice? Councilor Harris.
Not a question, but a comment. I'm, as a, the city council representative on Arwa, you know, we're ready to get that water in February, uh, into our take points and this is absolutely critical.
Good, Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, I guess I'll just have to ask, like, on the funding, is, does Arwa have any role participating in, in the acquisition cost? Or is they, are they just strictly on the service from the?
They, they will fund the acquisition of, of their pieces of the easement. We did agree to, to pursue that for them as part of the road bond project. We knew we'd been in tandem with that, but yes, they will be funding that.
So, some of this cost will, will be covered through the Arwa source?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So, they'll be covering the cost of their distribution line?
Right, just the easements that Arwa will need. Obviously, we need the lion's share of the property for the road.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Tobias.
It's 2.5 acres and, and the acquisition easements is only .48 acre, not even an acre. And it's gonna be almost a million one for all of that? Do we have an appraisal as far as the land goes or, I mean, and we haven't reached an agreement with the landlord, correct?
Right, we're still negotiating the ultimate, um, but, but that 1.1 is the appraised amount. And so, the possession and use agreement with an incentive allows us to, the city to provide an incentive to have access to the property, so we get access immediately. And then, um, and, and then we give them the 1.1 and then we negotiate, um, as we go through the eminent domain process.
So, we give them 1.1 and then we can negotiate for the additional?
Right, and you can see, uh, we are taking three acres of, of the five-acre tract.
Just, just to clarify, the, the, this is our appraisal amount. The property owner believes it's worth more than that and they're going to be contesting the amount to go through the process to see if, uh, they can get more for the property. Uh, but this, as, as Amber said, this gives us possession so we can start our project, in particular for Arwa. It's a timing issue for us, so we, uh, agree to look at the value later with the property owner, the ultimate value, but it, this is the appraised amount that we have. But they'll have the ability to go through a commission, commissioner's hearing if necessary, if they wanted to go that route ultimately, to determine the final value. We just don't know what that is just yet.
Okay, cause they could come back and if we need the additional, they could come back with four million and then we're end up paying five million for all of it, correct?
It, it could be a higher number. I don't wanna speculate what it could be, but it could certainly be a higher number. But that would be a commissioner's hearing that would determine what that value is. Our appraisal, again, is the 1.1 million dollars. That's the process, that's the process that we go through on all these when we do the PCA, we're getting the PUA. It allows us to take possession when timing is critical, which frankly, a lot of these to move the projects for, we want to get the PUAs when we can. And then that preserves the property owner's ability to argue what they think their, their property is worth, but allows the project to move forward. So we're not tied up for months trying to figure that out.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Are you done, Councilor Tobias?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we're taking three acres of five acres. And this is, you know, a good piece of land for him. So I can understand him wanting to negotiate this. But I, I also want to acknowledge that he's willing to give us use for 1.1, which is a win right there when we're trying to meet the, the target date of our Arwa intake point. So getting these lines in here is really crucial to us as a city. So making sure that we can move forward is really important on this one. So I, I can see, you know, I'm hoping, you know, but where the court decides later on, hopefully it's not that big of a number. But I know this is the important, what we're voting on today is just the 1.1 to get the project started. I mean, to get the project finished that we're trying to hit the February timeline, correct?
That's right. The PUA, though, is not 1.1 million dollars. It's, it's $40,000 is the total amount for the PUA. But what we're, the, the 1.1, the remainder that goes ultimately towards whatever the final price of the property will be, which will be determined at a later point. Hopefully that's helped clarify.
Yeah, that's better.
PUA, there's a fee just to provide the access, but this, the, the bulk of the dollars goes towards buying the property.
Okay, that makes it feel a little better.
Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item nineteen.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilor Harris, that we approve agenda item nineteen. Is there discussion on that motion? Hold some favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Call a post. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. I'm going to recommend that we take a 10 minute break and then we will pick, pick back up on agenda item number 21. We'll reconvene at 10, at 10 till, so at eight, at 8:50. Thank you. Started again. All right. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Next up is agenda item number 21. We're going to go ahead and get started, folks. All right. Next up is agenda item 21. Consider approval of a task order number six in the amount of 266,600 dollars with HDR Engineering, Inc. to conduct full design services for the parking lots at Steeplechase and Waterleaf Park. Steeplechase Park and Waterleaf Park. Mr. Trulove.
Good evening. We're going to go through the project summary for these two projects. Talk a little bit about existing site conditions, scope and timeline for the work, some proposed renderings, and then our options for contract award. So there are two projects associated with this particular task order. One is Waterleaf Park and one is Steeplechase Park. Both have completed their preliminary engineering reports in December of 2024. For Waterleaf, we're looking at a parking lot at Abundance Lane. And for Steeplechase Park, we're looking at three parking lots. One located in the floodplain at the basketball court, one at the playground and splash pad, and one at the dog park. Both of these park, parking lot designs will include 100% design, construction administration, and geotechnical services. For Waterleaf Park, our existing conditions, it's a Calici Park parking lot. There's no stripe parking. There's no ADA or EV charging stations, no sidewalks, limited and outdated landscaping, and no lighting. The scope and timeline for the improvements will be a new parking lot with 57 spaces, which is an increase of 40 to 57, or 40 to 50%. It'll be an asphalt parking area. There will be ADA accessibility and EV parking. There will be sidewalks and connectivity. There'll be landscaping. There will be lighting. The project timeline is six months for design and permitting, and then five to eight months for construction. And this is what we hope it will look like. And there it is again. Isn't it pretty? For Steeplechase, existing conditions, two of the three parking lots are in the floodplain. Again, it's a Calici lot. There's no stripe parking, no accessibility or EV charging stations, no sidewalks, limited and outdated landscaping, and no lighting for the spaces. For the, the third is an asphalt parking lot, but again, no ADA or EV charging stations, no sidewalks, limited and outdated landscaping, and no lighting. So scenario one for Steeplechase Park will convert all parking lots to standard asphalt. It'll be a scaled pavement. Parking area is 122 spaces, which again is an increase of 40 to 50%. It'll add that accessibility and, and EV stations, sidewalks, landscaping, and lighting. There will be, I'm sorry, the opinion of probable cost on this is about 1.1 million dollars with a project timeline of 12 to 14 months for design and permitting. A little bit more time for FEMA approval because it is in the floodplain and five to eight months for construction. And here are some renderings for scenario one, asphalt lots and Steeplechase Park. Second scenario that we're considering is to work on a permeable design. These parking lots will be the basketball court and the dog park area. Due to our floodplain requirements, due to floodplain requirements, installation of permeable materials might be possible, which provides for more rainwater penetration and reduces the impervious cover in the floodplain. And it would only require city permits. We would have fewer spaces at only 100, but we would be able to add the accessibility and the EV parking and the sidewalks, landscaping, and lighting. The cost is a little bit more here at about 1.4 million. The playground splash pad parking lot would, we anticipate being asphalt. HDR is verifying the FEMA map. It's currently not in the floodplain, but we do want to make sure that nothing has changed. Scaled paved parking areas of 22 spaces with accessibility and EV parking, sidewalks, landscaping, and lighting. So this is, would be some renderings of those permeable parking lots that we're considering. For scenario one, which is the asphalt design, the pros is that there is a lower cost and a lower maintenance cost. The cons is that it does have a longer design timeline due to the FEMA requirements that we would have to go through. And FEMA could deny and require additional engineering study, increasing the cost there. For scenario two, which is the permeable design, pros would be a shorter design timeline, potentially six to eight months faster. It does reduce our impervious cover in the floodplain, which will help with the adjacent neighborhood. It does, however, have a higher construction cost and will require more frequent maintenance. So the options that we have are to approve task order number six in the amount of 266,600 for scenario one, asphalt design. Scenario two, permeable design. Option two is to not approve, and staff recommends option one. And we have David Lopez with Parks to answer any technical questions about the utilization of the parks.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Trulove, does anybody have any comments or questions? Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, I actually liked the scenario two, the permeable design. One reason I'm thinking about the heat, so it's better, it doesn't radiate the heat that asphalt does. When you're talking about drainage, this is our parks, so natural areas. I kind of, kind of like that. What do you call it? Model better for our park design, especially because it's going into park. I just, I just kind of think it's something that we had talked about as a, a dais years ago and really didn't do a lot of follow through on it. But I kind of think being at a park might be the best place to implement this, especially when we're looking to keep the heat down. We've got kids out there running, playing. Anything we can do to, to mitigate that, also with the lighting, making sure we're using down lighting, LED, just so that we were keeping our dark skies friendly. Met a couple the other day in, what do you call it, one of the neighborhoods, and they were out there with their telescope and it was really cold to see it. So it was kind of neat. Those dark skies definitely going to need that. But I kind of like option one with scenario two.
Councilor Harris.
I agree. I, I don't like to see asphalt go in parking lots by our parks. I do think that we need permeable surfaces, especially when it's there by the creek, which both of those are. I would also like to assure that we do native plantings and not grass along that area, especially native grasses to get that water down to the watershed. I would like for us to take a look at finding a vendor for cool asphalt. I realize for asphalt, you've got to have it immediately there, so that's a problem. But there is a cool asphalt that, that is not as durable as regular asphalt, but it also might be something we could look at for areas where permeable is not practical.
Thank you. And Dr. Harris, just to let you all know, our conservation manager, John Davis, is going to be responsible for reviewing the planting plans for both of these projects and working with our engineering firm who's here with us today, HDR, to ensure that we use native landscaping.
I'm sure John will do that very admirably.
Councilor McKinney. Oh, you're good?
I, I got one thing, and I just, I do not think the EV charging stations make sense at these two parks. And the, the reason is, I agree with putting them at, in mixed use areas. The parking lot of La Verde is going into a mixed use area. Downtown lots make a lot of sense. Lots like at, even like at McDonald's or Walmart or any of those places. But these are neighborhood parks. They are not going to be used. They're just not going to be used. So I think you can save money there and still get the absolute best out of the parks. But I, I would at least like council to consider or really think about the expense of putting in these charging stations. Maybe sleeve them, maybe do one if you feel like you have to do it. But I saw the design, one showed four EV, EV slots. There's, there's just no one going to Steeplechase Park that needs to, to, to do that. They, they live in the neighborhood. If they have an EV, they're going to charge it at their house, which just, in my, in my view, means that those, those, those EV slots won't get used. Councilor Hauser.
Yeah. Are there opportunities for grants that would cover the costs possibly of those charging stations and or opportunities to lease out space to the companies who make the EV vehicles? To put their own branded station, charging stations, kind of like the Tesla ones that are right next to Five Guys along the north side of the parking lot?
Councilmember, we have not explored those opportunities.
Is that something we could explore?
Yeah. And if the recommendation from council is on this particular project, these two projects, if it's advised not to pursue EV charging stations, that would be a significant savings in our OPCC.
Yeah, what's significant?
That would, that would bring the cost, our opinion of probable cost of construction down.
Well, you're a parks director. Do you, do you think there's going to be high demand in a neighborhood park for EV charging stations?
You know, to your point, it, it may be more ideal to put them in centrally located areas or downtown areas. So I, I, I definitely see your point.
Well, I think this, the, the idea of EV came from La Verde as well as other projects where we're wanting to do that. I'm just trying to say that just because we did it there, it doesn't mean we have to do it here. And it might, it just doesn't make sense. I don't think it improves what we're doing at all to put those stations in personally.
Hey, can I just one more clarification on the timeline? I just, five day, six months for design and permitting, five to eight months. I mean, are we feeling like, so we're looking into 2026 when this would be finished? Is that?
We're, we're, if we go with the permeable option for, for Steeplechase, yeah, we're, we're about a year on timeline.
Is the timeline short? Okay, maybe I missed that before.
Yeah, the design timeline is going to be cut in half if we go with permeable.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, just to remind you that both these parks lead to the vibe trail. And if we're encouraging people to be on vibe trail, I think having AV stations there at Waterleaf where it starts, or even over at Steeplechase where it ends, where, because that vibe trail go from Waterleaf all over to Steeplechase. So if we're trying to encourage people to come and hit the vibe trail, that might be an encouragement there.
How about we sleeve it? In other words, we have this set up and then maybe down the road, if everything, if all of a sudden we're like, man, people are parking there and they've got EVs, let's put it in there. But I think it's sort of tell, you know, it's like cart leading horse or however you say it. It, I just, I'm, I'm 100% convinced, at least in our current configuration for the city, those EV stations aren't going to get used. Maybe, maybe down the road, we, I mean, I'm just saying we could sleeve it. We could save that money now. Make that decision when there's actually demand there. I think you'd have a hard case making a demand for four EV charger stations at Steeplechase and, and Waterleaf. I just do.
We can also consider, as we're going through design, maybe structuring those as alternate items in the bid so we can see what the cost would be to see if it makes sense to just have the infrastructure in place under the ground sleeved or to put in some number of them. So we can have, we can get that data as part of our, as part of our construction bid process.
I think that's a good idea. Then we could come back and as we're bidding it, then you'll know how much of a savings really is it. And, and maybe it could be really significant, what, you know, what we, we're just guessing what that might be, but do you have a bid?
We would want to do the infrastructure under the ground and within the parking lot so that we, if we ever want to do it in the future, we have the ability to.
And, and what I'm going by is something that I've looked at. I mean, when you look at, you know, some of the walking trails in Austin, they've got some really good trails there. You'll see a lot of, you know, battery operated cars. So that's something that I'm thinking myself, they're parked there on the side of the road. I go, what do they need to be charged? I mean, I mean, I just keep thinking about, you spend all day on the trail. Where'd you come from? I mean, because there's people that come from out of town to, into Austin to walk their trails as well. So I was wondering, hopefully if our goal was to, you know, increase people coming to our city to walk our trails, then we want to give every, you know, asset to them, you know, to make them want to come here.
The trail part is, 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 I actually hear what you're saying because people go to Waterleaf, it's the entrance to the vibe, our future vibe trails, well, it's a four multi mile natural trail. So there's a possibility of people staying there for a long time. But I still think from a volume standpoint, to, in order to make these things justify even remotely the investment we have to make in them, you, you need a high volume of turnover, which is why McDonald's and, and, and Walmart and those high, you know, urban and retail areas just make a lot more sense than a neighborhood park, in, in my opinion. So I'd love to at least have ad alternates so we can see how much we're putting into Waterleaf. Because think about, if it's $100,000, let's say, what can you do for $100,000 in Waterleaf? I'm not trying to reduce the investment, but I can think of a lot of ways to bring more value to the residents in Waterleaf, you know, than, than the EV charging station. So I at least want us to consider it.
Go ahead.
I guess I'll have to jump in too.
Okay.
So I hear what you're saying, but I also disagree to some points because I do see that on weekends, there are a lot of users and we have to provide variety. And I hear what Mr. Rizzo is saying. You know, we want to cater to people that come in and visit and want to use the trails and, you know, get healthy and the healthy lifestyle. And so, but it, it, it would make sense to at least start with one and then have the sleeves ready to, as we need more, we add more. But give us that option so that it's there, so it doesn't cost us again to rip it up, right? We don't want to have to do that. So I do like the elements of the shading and the lighting because I think that's a public safety issue that people, gets too dark out there for them to use it. I hope that we're still going to do more on the fields. So if we do save any money by reducing the EV stations, as the mayor's alluding to, I want that money back into the fields, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, where it can get us the most value. But I'm not saying that we don't need electric vehicle because you don't never know what you need, right? And not on, and there's all types of users and homeowners. And then on the Steeplechase part, I do like incorporating elements of permeable. But what kind of problems would you have with permeable in, like in the long run, long term? Do you have, you know, that there's a maintenance, recurrent maintenance, but will those things get muddy to where, you know, you've got a muddy, muddy parking lots or?
If properly maintained, they shouldn't get muddy. Those, the, the GeoGrid interlocking paving system should retain those. But his staff does their sweeps and the routine inspections. They're looking for any sign of distress or wearing. But they're meant to be a capital project, 20 year life on these mats, just like you get out of something like asphalt.
That's not being proposed on the basketball courts, right? Because I don't see how that works on, with a dribble, like a basketball.
Oh, no, no. Just, just.
Only on the parking lot.
It's a mat with a substance, with pebbles inside. And what it does, it, it allows water to drain down into the ground as well. So now you're keeping the environment and it keeps the cooling down as well. So you don't have that hot pavement there, but it, it's a really good product.
I'd like to say also that, you know, the parking lot, I know we've been talking about it for over two years, probably longer than that. But in Waterleaf, it was a disturbance to the, the neighbors, the neighborhood when, you know, people would come and park and use the soccer fields. So having that parking lot well designed is, is really going to help reduce, hopefully, some of those pressures. But, you know, not that they're bad pressures, but community pressures of having a place to park.
It's going to make that space a lot more efficient, increase its capacity 40 to 50%, just by striping it linear.
Yeah, and, and I was just focused on the shading and on the getting water out there, you know, to maintain those fields. But like I said, I'm not saying I don't want the EV stations, but I think that we need to at least have one, something functional to start with and then go from there.
And I think taking Mrs. Trulove's recommendation for the, for the ad alt, it'll really show us if, if there is a bidder that comes in with some value for charging stations that we may want to capitalize on.
Because I don't want to stand up here and be hypocritical and say, I want golden standard, but then you're not really producing golden standard. You know, that's not, that's not fair. That's, that's inequity in my view. So I want to make sure that we are providing a good, fair balance to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Next, we're Harris.
Are we going to have having interactive kiosks at the parks? We've talked about that.
For trail system or just parks in general?
At each park?
It's something we look into just for way finding in informational areas.
Because I was thinking if we do interactive kiosks, we could survey the people who are coming to that park to see if they would use EV chargers.
It's a good idea.
We're still thinking about Wi-Fi connectivity out there?
We've discussed Wi-Fi in all of our park system.
Additional comments?
Can I just circle back to the request to pursue opportunities with the EV car companies to see if they would pay us on a monthly basis to lease this space? Which if it is a thing, according to the internet and these companies do it, there's programs for it which could help offset monthly costs of upkeep and things within the park themselves. So if that, is that something we can look into?
Something we can look into. Yes, sir.
Well, I just want to be clear. I'm not saying that we should reduce our investment. I'm saying that the EV stations are not the best, highest use gold standard. Imagine what 100 extra thousand dollars of shrubbery in front of the park would do to help as far as and or 100,000 extra dollars in shade. I think if you ask the people in Water Leaf, really anyone in the city who would use, any resident and taxpayer who would use the park does not need a charging station. Even if they live across town, they have their charging stations at their house. So the charging stations only benefit someone who's coming in a long distance and needs to use that space in order to charge their vehicle and and move on. And the amount of people who are coming in from far out of town in a in a year to either of those parks is small and the amount of those that have an EV is even smaller. And the amount of those that have an EV and would actually need to charge their vehicle might be zero. So I'm just, I would, I want, we have a large bucket of money for investment in these parks. So this is just part of the overall investment strategy. And I want to make sure that the overall dollars go as far as they can. I'm not trying to reduce the quality here. I just don't think that it brings a return to people in Water Leaf or the surrounding neighborhood. So at least we can consider how much that would cost and what we might could do with the alternatives. Customer Tobias.
Thank you. I'm actually all for the asphalt because it actually increases it by 40 to 50% of the parking spaces. That that's their correct or no, it's going to be the same amount?
Both scenarios.
Both scenarios will?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'm just looking at the aesthetics behind it. And I know it gets odd. I know asphalt's whatever. There's asphalt everywhere. But I do agree with the planting and lighting. And I know we'll probably talk later on. I know we're talking about parking lot, but later on about the lighting in the fields. Because there's been a request many times. So I'm kind of in favor of scenario one with the asphalt, even though it says that the design can take up to six to eight months for FEMA. I've lived out there for almost 22 years and I think adding additional six months and it's got gravel all this time would not make that much of a difference. But that's just my scenario on that. And I kind of agree on both the mayor's point. Do we really need to have charging stations to an area where you're supposed to get out and exercise anyway? Or walk to or ride a bike to or run to? But I also see the point that, you know, I can't be putting my head in the sand that a technology today requires a lot of these cars to have electricity. And to Mr. Heiser's point, you know, that could be a funding opportunity for each park if they were to get in with a contract with a company that wants to put their little stations out there and put the city Kyle logo on it and we charge them a fee for every little thing they got. Make it a business opportunity.
One other thing to consider that would make a huge impact would be that, I mean, our wastewater treatment plant produces effluent and pumps the effluent right up 150 in front of Water Leaf. There really should be no reason why we aren't actively pursuing using the effluent to water the fields that are out there. And maybe that's coming. Is that on the way?
Yes, sir.
All right. So like, there's nothing going to make a bigger quality of life impact than just making that move right there on that on that park. Because not only does it make the grass green, but it gives you the ability to hold it to a higher standard, leveling and and a better turf.
It's coming. Yes, sir.
That's not on this agenda, but it's coming.
Yeah, it's not on this agenda. No, sir, but it is coming. Yes.
Well, I was just going to suggest that if that wasn't incorporated, that absolutely could be something that we could add into the project.
And I did, if I may, wanted to provide an update for for this slide. We're still in question as of until today. So whether or not the parking lot at steeplechase by the playground was within the floodplain, it's not within the floodplain. So that parking lot is slated to be asphalt.
All right. Motion, Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 21, going with Option 1, Scenario 2. Hold on, let me just make sure. Scenario 2, yes.
Can I amend it? Get to look, look at the
The motion on the table is their second.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilmember Harris that we approve Agenda Item 21, Option 1, Scenario 2. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Zuniga.
Just, you know, to look at the options for the EV stations for pre-plumbing, one or none, or at least some some options for variety.
Yes, sir.
That needs to be a motion to amend.
And that's a motion to amend?
You didn't, you didn't add that EV part into your motion, so.
So you can look at.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend my motion. Someone needs to second that, right?
Second.
No, you have to make the motion to amend, like what's your going to motion?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Then you get a second.
I thought I needed, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 21, Option 1, Scenario 2, with the amendment that staff will look into the EV charging stations, the costs, the installation, possible partnership agreements. Yeah?
Yeah. And and bid as an add alternate. It's the key word, add alternate.
And add alternate. Thank you.
All right, the amendment, motion to amend was made by Councilor Heiser, seconded by Councilor Zuniga. Amendment is to break out the EV, put it as an add alternate, consider all of our options. So we'll first, is there a discussion on the motion to amend? I will first vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Now we're back to the original. Is there any discussion on that item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Steeplechase is getting a parking lot. Parking lot.
All right, next up is Agenda Item 22, Consider Approval Resolution, approving Task Order Number 1 with Brinkley Sergeant Wington, Wington Architects, Inc., to provide preliminary design services for a new facility at 1500 Daisy Lane in the amount of $69,000. Ms. TruLo.
So the city purchased 1500 Daisy Lane at the end of December of 2024. This was originally designed as a medical office building. It's 10,650 square feet with no interior finishes. We anticipate that this will be used for potentially for a variety of of different city programming elements. The scope of work includes data collection, community and stakeholder input, staff feedback and review meetings, extensive stakeholder input. Absolutely going to have stakeholder input, space plan, interior design concepts, programming and schematics, budget for those interior improvements and a final report. If we have council award today, we would work through May of 2025 to collect data and citizen input, have two public input meetings in that timeframe. By July of 2025, we would have a space plan and interior design concepts complete. Parks Board and City Council presentations would be made in that timeframe. And then we would finish Phase 2 at the end of December in 2025, which would include completion of construction on the interior aspects.
Is Brinkley Sergeant here?
They are here.
I'm sorry if you weren't finished. Go ahead.
No, I'm done. So that's the recommendation is to approve the task.
All right, can you go to the last slide?
Yes.
Can I have Brinkley Sergeant come up for a second?
Absolutely.
This is Stephen Springs with BSW.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Is there any reason why you have to wait until May to complete your two public hearings? Why couldn't we do one in late January and one in late February? And why does it have to go four, four or five months between now and then?
That's really up to you guys. Is it the amount of input that is desired by you guys will be our guiding principle. So we just had to have some starting place.
Well, what I guess what I'm saying is you said two public hearings and stakeholder meetings. I think it's great. We'll have our opportunity to collect a lot of information from those two meetings, especially if they're well advertised. But it does not have to, we don't have to wait till May before we start, take the next next decision on this.
I wouldn't be waiting till May. It's just however long it takes depends on how how much engagement you guys want to embrace. So typically you would have meetings, you know, over a period of time. And it, to your point, that
Well, there's some urgency to move this project along and I'm just identifying several months we can shave off the project without sacrificing the public engagement at all, so.
And that's probably an error, Mayor, in the way we crafted this timeline. That we would just be accounting for the input that we received from the beginning of this contract to incorporate that into incorporate design based on the input that we received. But we would be pursuing public input, you know, as as early as possible so we can begin working through concepts and all the way through to schematic.
Anybody have any feedback on that?
Yeah, just one, and the reason why that number really, I mean, that date really jumped out at me too. Because I mean, we already purchased a building and, I mean, with our city building, we were ready to go at the other two buildings. Yeah, so we, yeah, so I just want to see us going 100 miles an hour on this project, making sure we get it done in a timely manner. I mean, when I saw May, I was like, wow, I mean, why are we laying so long?
Yeah, so to add to that point, like the 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 50, the the proper projects on Republic, they're finished out. Projects ready to go. So you just got to do the interior. It's exactly the same here. And we're not even proposing to start design until after that one's going to be done. So I feel like there's absolutely some wiggle room in this process to still get the public engagement done. But it's an interior finish out where it's just not that, not that hard. We do not have to wait five months to start the, start this project or seven months to to start that actual work. It's not that hard. So I would like for us to to have a look at what we can do to shorten this timeframe up.
We'll try to be as progressive as possible with this timeline. The difference with, the major difference, I would say, between the Republic Building and this building is you do have a pre-intermittent building with a shell and we were able to build off the the job order contractor was able to build off existing as built. Whereas this one's going to probably require a lot more architectural renderings and a lot of the permitting that goes with it. So we're trying to account for that. And then depending on the type of public input we receive for programming, we wanted to make sure that we account for all of that in the timeline to get the proper architectural renderings for construction.
And and to add to that point where the mayor's saying this is still a shell, we're not designing a whole building, we're doing the inside. So we get the public input, let's get the design team going and let's get working on this building to get it done. I mean, because it's it's a shell. I mean, we've, the inside of the building also has already all the cutouts so we can run our infrastructure, everything else. So if we can get moving on this building pretty quickly, I mean, the the building's ready to go. I mean, it's, it just, I understand the public input, getting design, but I think we can do that in a more timely manner.
Six weeks. That's all it takes to get the public input, six more weeks for design and then six weeks to start construction. That's that's four months. It's four and a half months before we break ground on it and that's plenty of time. Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, Brian, clearly, it seems like there's very many people up here who would like a faster timeline than this. What do you, knowing that, what do you think is reasonable? The most reasonable scenario that could be quicker than what we're seeing here? That's not putting everyone on in on your team in a pinch?
Well, I I think I would recommend that you have some kind of community survey that goes out. I think you need to have some kinds of, some kind of community meetings that you have. We can try to compress that. Certainly, I think there's time that can come back off of this. You know, how much? I don't want to speculate without really sitting down and getting a thing with it. But we can, if the direction is shorten as much as possible, we can come back and do that. If you post it along the process, you can always tell us you can do some more or explore other avenues. Which you want to look at, we can certainly, we can come back to you in last, in February or early March and say, here's what we've got. What do you think?
Well, I just want to make it perfectly clear that I don't, and I'll speak for everyone here, if you'll allow me. I don't think anyone wants to cut corners. That is, we don't want to speed up the timeline to cut corners. We are ready to go with this location and to make a decision to have something in front of us, you know, within the next couple of months and, you know.
And and the biggest thing is, the biggest date that gets me is December 25th. We're not going to finish building until a year later after we purchase it. I mean, that just, I'm just sitting there going, this is slow. I mean, it's real slow. I I see the July 25 to start the plan. I'm thinking that's when the finalization, we should be opening the doors by then, July. Because it's, it's a shell. It's a shell of a building. All we're doing is finishing out the inside. We're not, we're not building the whole building.
Yeah, but we just voted on something, beginning to end four months, very similar concept here. Right, because why, but why is it different? Because you use a vibe board to go quicker and you use a variety of things.
That one does not require as much electrical work, as much mechanical work, sort of things that do require an engineer and architect to be involved.
Starting that until until July. And I'm not trying to push back.
I understand that. I just do want to make clear that there are some differences. This one does require a licensed architect doing work. The other one, we're not doing the kind of finish out that requires any sort of changes of the structure or electrical locations. And so that's why that one can move as quick as it can and just be a drop contract.
I understand the desire to move faster. We'll certainly try to move it faster, but there are time for, I also want to give manage expectations and make sure you know what's possible. But moving in by July, I just don't believe is possible. So I want to be very honest with the council and the community about that. But we do hear you. We could, we'll try to move quicker.
Okay, but licensed licensed architects on a project like this, it's not overly complicated. The interior electrical buildout is not that complicated.
It depends on what you're doing.
Projects, many of us
We don't know what we're doing yet, though.
All right, so we can, we can clarify that I think that this facility is not, it's not an open ended discussion about what do you want to use with this facility? The council bought this property with a specific purpose in mind and within that purpose, there's some room. We're trying to decide exactly how it's going to get used, but it's an event space that's primarily going to be the new home for the the seniors. And so that that does not take a lot of time to figure out exactly how you want to do it, present back some options to us and let and let us give you the feedback, go with this and then start design immediately. So if I don't know what Brinkley's situation is, if y'all are ready to 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 do design work or so this is just a contract for the the outreach or does this include all the architecture and engineer work as well?
What's in the proposal as of now is to do the public engagement, the programming and the concept. So that would all be done, actually what we're proposing is the concept's basically done by July. What we understood initially when we were asked for a proposal was that you guys wanted to be in by the end of the year. So this this timeline was based on that goal.
All right, but so we're letting you know we have a different goal than that now. Is that something that you, we can change on the fly in this contract or do y'all need time to to rework it and make a proposal? I mean, I don't know what you're, if y'all have a lot of projects going on, we could probably have another firm in. It's like, it's, we, we, the, the, the order of of what we're trying to do here is important.
The way the item is drafted, it's a resolution so we can approve the contract in final form approved by the city attorney. So if we want to change the timeline after this meeting, you guys can still approve the contract. We can change the timeline and have the new timeline and the signed contract.
Yeah, we can accommodate whatever timeline you guys dictate. And maybe another thing to help you understand how we structured it. A lot of times with studies, the challenges, scope of work is to define the scope of work. So we approach that oftentimes as an hourly, not to exceed. So fundamentally, what our contract has is a scope description as best as we could understood, understand up till today. And we're not going to spend any more hours on it than we need to to achieve your end. And so once we, once we have that scope defined, however long that takes, it can be accelerated, obviously, depending on the the public engagement component is the fuzziest thing. And if we compress that, then it compresses the whole schedule to your point. And then, but once we get to the end of that stage, then we know exactly what the scope of the project is. So for example, to this point, we don't know if we have a structural issue to contend with or not. We don't know if we have a lot of MEP to contend with or not. So what do you have? We don't have a way to provide a proposal to engineer those systems. We don't even need an engineer for those systems. So this So this, this scope of work is intended to get this to a point of a clearly defined project. So you'd have us an approved concept and space plan, you know what you're getting at that point. And the intent would be that we would roll right into design in order to meet your schedule.
So if we, if we said six month, or six weeks of public engagement from, from this vote, that puts us, call that three meetings from now or three total meetings. So that's the second meeting in, uh, in February to complete the public engagement and then six weeks to design, to put your concept plan together. That puts us in the first meeting in March.
Right, so if, if that's the dictate, we would just determine what's the best strategy to get the best level engagement we could get within that timeline.
I, I understand that.
That would be how we would react to that dictate.
The proposals for two, two public meetings, I think you could accomplish that within that period of time, right? Six, six weeks?
Sure. The hardest part to gauge timeline wise, frankly, is a survey because that just, the survey just means how long do you leave it open?
Right.
You know, that kind of a thing.
You could do like an online survey during that six weeks, I suppose, to collect information.
Survey, I would say a minimum of a month open to, to try to get, and you know, a fair amount of engagement and that can run concurrent with the public meeting.
But, but we've done a ton of surveys on what do the people want, senior center versus rec center versus, I mean, we've got that. We just spent several hundred thousand dollars to get that information, which led us to make this purchase, which led us to, to get us on this path. And so we, I'm worried you're, we're going to just be going in circles on a lot of this stuff.
Whatever, and whatever information you guys already have in hand, it just helps us, like you said, move that much faster. So we don't know what we don't know yet about.
Councilmember McKinney.
The level of engagement you've already had. So that's great.
Well, I, I definitely see value in expediting this as much as possible. I, I don't want to minimize the, uh, the, the public engagement input. I've, I've been in this building, it is, uh, very raw and, and just drowning in possibility. And I, I don't want to see us rush a project and then miss something that could have made it better and then redo it again a year or two from now. When we could have, you know, taken a couple more days or a week and, and really put a little bit more thought into it. I, while I do agree with you, Mayor, that, you know, July is way further off than what I would like to see. I, I do want to at least get that public input before we, we launch forward on, on construction projects.
Oh, my only response, and I agree with what you're saying, just in principle, but when it comes to the, the possibilities you're talking about, we, we, when we made the acquisition, we limited what the possibilities were with the project. And so a lot of the public engagement that, that we're going to seek about what would you like to see here is not on the table because we made this acquisition for a reason. In, in principle, serves as a multi-use building, we, we have the ability to have meeting space, uh, but that primarily is going to be designed with the interests of the seniors in mind so that they can use that space. They've already presented, I mean, they, they, I promise you, they've already got a floor plan. The people who are going to be at these public engagement meetings could show you what they want to do now and we have to just decide what, what we want to do to add to it. And these public engagement meetings aren't going to be technical, like what I think you're thinking of as far as like how we might design it, how much money we're going to, because that's, that has a lot to do with how much we're willing to invest in the, in the construction, in the, the internal renovations. Those, I'm waiting to get to the point where we can make some of those decisions, but the, the public's not going to be able to make those decisions for us. And if we go out and they say they wanted, they, they think that a better use for the building would be a library or a dance hall or, or just whatever it, it might be. We already know, so I think it's a little disingenuous to, to go out and ask people of what are all the multitude of ways that we want to use this facility? When we made the acquisition with a specific purpose in mind, it has not changed as far as I can tell, you know, from that commitment. So I'm just trying to say, if we're going to ask folks, it's like how, what is the question that we're trying to ask for all these weeks and months to the, to the public? And the, the question is, is not, how would you like to see this facility used? The question is, this, this facility is going to be a multipurpose event space that has a primary tenant of the senior citizens. Within that context, how would you like this space to be used? And that's just a very specific, very limited question that you can get with a group of stakeholders that are there, just like what we've done at, at other projects. Like we didn't, we didn't go when we, when we acquired the, the, the pawn for Hero's Memorial. We didn't go out and say, how would y'all like to see this facility, how would the public like this to be done, do surveys? We brought in the first responders, we brought in the veterans and we had public hearings and engagements within a very specific, limited window of time. And it didn't take that long, frankly, because of that, I think, but still a lot of the design, how much we invested in it, how it looked, form and function. Those decisions were made by this council, working with the architect through an engineer, or through a design process. So I'm just, I just think that, I think we can go faster on this. And I'm actually worried that if we go out and have public engagement with surveys and all kinds of stuff, where we're opening it up to a lot of different, because it's not that big of a facility. We're opening up to a lot of different uses and opinions, we're going to be further away come, come May than we are now because you're not going to know what to do. So I, I want to see this project move forward, which is why I'm trying to limit what we're doing here as much as, as much as we can. Uh, Councilor Tobias.
Oh, okay. First of all, I love this building. I drive by it every night and the way it's lit up. The architecture itself on the outside is, is genuine and I know that when it comes to the interior design, we want to be able to hold it up to that part. And I've been inside the building itself, but it also seems like it has another level on top that could be used as a second story office space. The way I'm looking at the way the design is, so, um, there, there's so much possibility. And, 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 and to speak for, for the council, because this is something that's been on the table for years, for, uh, the senior citizens and so forth, and the communities and so. So it's, you got to understand, sir, that we are very passionate about this and we are, we, we maybe sound very eager because it's been a long time coming and it's finally here, we finally have a building. So, um, I, I do agree on, on the, the timeline, on, on the input, just be able to see it, uh, have the committee, uh, look at it. But as far as the primary goal, that's exactly what the mayor and everybody's saying is what we're using it for. Their main goal was for our senior citizens to be able to have a facility, to have events, uh, for their, for their activities and so forth. So on that note there, I, I think, uh, we just need to make sure that if we hold you this, we can, we can really stay to the timeline that we're really requesting as much as possible.
Councilor Harris.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Tobias. I agree with both of you and appreciate your, your input.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, it is.
Honestly, I, I think we're just all excited about the building, we want to get it done.
Yeah.
We see the possibilities, we know what the direction was when we went after this building, but I want to thank staff as well for getting this over the finish line for us acquiring the, the building as well. So I, I don't want that to go unnoticed. I mean, y'all's hard work, I know this was a tricky, uh, building to get and purchase. So I just want to thank you all for your hard work and I'm sorry we're putting this pressure on you, but we, this is something we've been going after for a long time and we'd love to see it to come to fruition in, in, in real time.
Councilor Hauser. So how do we move forward with this contract, but stipulate very specifically that we would like an expedited timeline? Did you, did you base the, the proposal on, you said on hours? And so you're kind of saying, we, this is how many hours, the 69,000 and we're planning to stretch it over a course of, of this period. Can you continue, give us the hours, but just in the, the 12 weeks that we're asking for? Because I don't want to reduce your value that you add, I want to have you working on this more than other projects.
We've got a lot of flexibility. I mean, our, our job is going to be to, to meet your goals, whatever, whatever those are. So we've, we've heard loud and clear that timeline is, is the overarching goal, so we would, we would work to meet, meet the timeline.
What, what Councilor Hauser is asking is we want to set that in this motion to make sure that you're under a specific direction from us.
I, I'd like to say something like mid-March that we'd be back to council and, and I don't have an exact date of a council meeting, maybe we could, Jesse, if you could look and see what that might be. That we would return to council by a specific date with the public engagement and any concepts that we would have, at least some preliminary concepts for you to consider.
Second meeting in March?
Second meeting in March, we could just say.
I don't know what that date is, but that'd be for your consideration, at that time, you could decide that's enough. You, you feel good about it, you could always decide you wanted to take some more time depending on where you were, but it wouldn't lock you into exactly what that was, but at least you'd know you'd have something there to consider at that point.
So the completion of all of phase one by mid-March.
Right.
That would be the motion.
Tried to give you as much of that as we could.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, agenda item 22, the contract for Brinkley Sargent, but with it, uh, an escalated timeline of, uh, for phase one to be completed and presented to council by the second meeting in March.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Hauser, second by Councilor Harris that we approved agenda item 22, uh, expediting phase one to be completed by second meeting in March. Is there discussion on the motion, Mayor Proton?
So that's bringing us up a couple, two months and we should be taking the finish up product two, three months, hopefully, if we can get the engineering going. So just, just throwing that out there.
We'll see, but I mean, that's, they're doing their part, now it'll be up to us to do ours when it comes back.
Yeah, by then you'd have all the information you guys need to make the decisions you need to make.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero, thank you. All right, next up agenda item 23. Yeah, that's good. Consider approval of a contract with, with Jackson and Ryan Architects for a comprehensive feasibility study on building and operating a City of Kyle animal care center in an amount of $82,000. Mr. Elizondo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, let's shift focus, let's shift focus to an animal care center facility. Uh, this item is for a feasibility study contract. A little bit of a background for this item, the San Marcos Regional Animal Shelter plans to release its interlocal partners by 2026. Uh, this due to the growing demands in the central Texas region. This gives the City of Kyle a unique opportunity to look at self-sustaining options for an animal care center. And, uh, staff has gone out and done an RFP, uh, and selected Jackson and Ryan Architects to do a full comprehensive feasibility study for this. Uh, we'll talk about what that feasibility study entails in just a minute, but that feasibility site will kick off in January, assuming the approval of this contract and complete around May of 2025. There is a, as you all know, there is a kind of a shot clock on this item as we, we need to move forward with getting the feasibility study and everything that we need so that we can move forward to design and eventually construction of this animal care facility. Staff will take the feasibility study and in multiple phases, which we'll see in just a minute, bring back to council different steps and eventually bring a full feasibility to, that will lead into a design contract. So just to talk about the feasibility study this, with Jackson Ryan, and I, I want to mention that I'll go through this at a high level and answer any simple questions about the feasibility study. But we do have, uh, Kim Hanchin here from Jackson Ryan, if we want to get into any more detailed discussion. And thank you for hanging out, uh, for this item. But the, for the feasibility study, the first thing they'll do is a full needs assessment. That's going to be all the data collection, the raw data collection, the public input, the stakeholder input will work with, uh, will look at workshops and visioning. And we'll look at programming for the space, this is really a huge undertaking right at the beginning to make sure we have everything that we need, not only from the city itself, but also data that we've collected from the San Marcos Animal Regional Shelter. And then after that, there'll be a comprehensive report, I, you know, I'm not, I don't want to set anything in stone, but I imagine at this point we'll come back to council, give a report on that, on that first needs assessment, the data that's come out of it and what we've seen. And then we'll move in, using all of that data and the public input, we'll move into a site evaluation phase. Luckily, just from conversations with council and staff that has looked at different sites, we have eight to 10 different sites that we want to consider already. I'm sure that number will grow, but a lot of that will be whittled down as we look at the needs assessment and what comes out of that data. And then we'll move into an operations and financials, looking at financial projections and cost analysis for the, for the care center itself. And then of course, a full regulatory and legal phase that looks at animal standards, compliance and the prioritization of stakeholder findings. We'll bring all of that back to council, which will ultimately altogether lead into a final conceptual design that takes all of that into account. And with community feedback and those designs will be brought before council. So probably in two to three stages, we'll work through this, uh, bringing back to council, getting feedback and then moving on to the next, the next phase. But for tonight, we just have the contract with Jackson and Ryan up for approval, staff recommends approval so we can move forward with this process. It's an extensive process, but very necessary for what we're moving forward with.
All right, thank you, Mr. Elizondo. Anybody have any questions or comments, Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I, I know we've had, uh, staff has had, uh, meetings with, uh, the county as well. We've had some meetings, I know they sent us some information as well, were we able to utilize that information to help out this process a little bit, Brian? The feasibility study they did, were we able to give it to our team to, uh, see if we could shorten that timeline down a little bit?
Uh, we, we do have that data that was, that was, uh, provided, uh, we'll be sharing that with them as we go through the feasibility. And, you know, we want to make sure that we have a very careful evaluation of that information and the key, the characteristics just for Kyle, because that study that the county did was not for Kyle, it was for a countywide, uh, program. So we'll be looking at just the Kyle related data to see, uh, what do we need and what would the, the options be that we would have after we talked to our stakeholders? So yes, we'll be looking at it, we do have that information, that's been passed on to the consultant.
I was just making sure we had, they had passed that on because I know that could maybe shorten, uh, help the scope of work that we're doing as well.
It, it certainly helps.
It's a tool.
Yes, sir, it just doesn't replace all of the other work, but it does help, yes, sir.
All right, sounds good, appreciate it, thank you.
Councilor Tobias.
Okay, um, so if this goes through this approval for the Jackson Ryan, um, what would be their process to be able to help identify site locations?
Well, I can invite Kim up here for maybe a little bit more extensive explanation, but just initially as an overview, all of that needs assessment, the, the data that's coming in, the, the right sizing, um, the, looking at the future, uh, growth of our region. That would all go into the site evaluation of how much space we need and what would be a best location.
Okay.
And, and we would obviously take all of that into account. I don't know if you have anything else to say on site evaluation?
Kim Hanchin, um, I would just say that in addition, we would be looking at accessibility for the public, we'd be looking at the community input during that time as well.
Okay.
Because where that's located, where the services are most needed, um, being able to ensure that we're centralizing the location in a way that makes it most accessible and most effective for the community. So that would just be another element that we're looking at in the site evaluation.
Yeah, I was just curious because, um, same thing with the, the property that we just loaded on, I was driving around Kyle seeing like, okay, well, what existing buildings do we have in our city that we could utilize for this project or for this need? I just kind of wanted to do the same thing because as you go around that there's a lot of pocket properties in Kyle. And so if there's a, a specific plan, like as far as, uh, surveys and data that you're getting, maybe this location in this part of town may not be feasible versus having somewhere maybe up north or more south. Versus the east-west corridors of, of Kyle.
There's a lot of the pros and cons that'll go into it, but what, having that needs assessment to give us the actual size requirements, that'll be the first parameter. Because obviously, if it needs to be this big and the existing properties are this big, then it, it, it doesn't work. So I think that there's a lot of opportunities and based on what properties that are available and what access there is, future visions for those areas and how this would fit into it, for sure.
Okay, sure, good, yeah, because there's other areas in Kyle that say, oh, 10 acres for sale and five acres over here, but then again, how big is the facility? And this, this is going to have to be a long, long-term, uh, building itself, so.
And Councilmember Tobias, you'll be happy to know that we've, we've known about this upcoming for a little while and so all the discussions that council has had when we've looked at different sites. And you all have mentioned, hey, this might be a decent location or we might want to look at this. We've been taking notes, so we have an extensive list that we will make sure to hand over to Jackson and Ryan.
Okay, especially the one, yeah, right, I noticed, I've already scouted and then I sent y'all the email, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Question. Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, to your point, uh, Mayor, sorry, Tobias, Councilmember Tobias, uh, I wanted to ask about the site evaluation as well. Are they, can she come back?
Yes, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so y'all, y'all, y'all build the architectural design only, right? So they're, they're really beautiful, uh, good, best, best practice animal shelters is what we're looking for. So that's why you just can't go into any type of building because this is a functional, legal thing that needs to house, uh, living animals, um, that sometimes are abandoned or pets, whatever. And the whole point is to have them adopted.
Right.
So you want to have an environment conducive that would, that's going to be beneficial. As you said, central maybe, may work, but also you want to have that great, like green environment around it, so to make it a friendly environment. So my suggestion would be that you start, though, when you start your evaluations, you look for the good, green, open park spaces that, that are feasible to the goal that we're trying to accomplish.
For sure.
Because I know that there are prejudices against animal shelters because of some ignorance, so we don't want to go down those kinds of paths. We want to make sure that we do what's best for the city. We want to make sure that we do what's best for the city, but for the long-term animal shelter and needs. So we focus on that, you know, as, as.
I think that the process involving the, the community input allows us for some mitigation for some of those concerns. That we, we are accustomed, it's very common to have that kind of nimbyism about animal shelters.
Right.
Addressing that in the upfront during this process will make the rest of that process and the building design, all of that go a lot more smooth.
Right, so the advantages of animal shelters are that they actually provide a public service in times of disaster recoveries or education, and they build communities, they build volunteer opportunities. So we want, we want those to be the focal points as you craft and design this and bring it forward with the community engagement.
Okay, for sure.
So I, I looked at some of your past projects, so I was impressed with them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, any further discussion on this item?
Like to make a motion to approve, is this a considered Agenda Item?
Agenda Item Twenty-three.
Agenda Item Twenty-three, second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Zuniga, second by Councilmember McKinney that we approve Agenda Item Twenty-three. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero, thank you. All right, next up is Agenda Item Twenty-four, Consider An Appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial, three to two, of a conditional use permit for a building facade revision to use solid garage doors located at 250 Chula Hill Drive in accordance with the I-35 overlay district development standards. Mr. Lutz, you have the floor. Applicants are here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Congratulations, welcome, Mr. McKinney. So tonight, we're here to have an appeal. So this is a recent case that went to P&amp;Z on last month. This is regarding I-35 overlays regarding the new ProSource building. So it's located at 250 Chula Hills Drive. This is a Hayes Comer Park Center. This is a planned unit development district, so there is a special zoning on that. But it's also in the I-35 overlay, so we have two sets of governing regulations here. So it's kind of a project started back in early COVID, so little, little history here. So applicant submitted for building permit for construction. This was just building review, standard construction docs. February twenty-two, that was approved by a third party. No permits were issued. We needed a site development and a CUP. That's part of that three-step process to build in the I-35. So then, February that same year, we did get a site development application. But then September, that's, that year, pad site started construction. We still hadn't issued any permits and gone through that process. So October twenty-two, we had some plan revisions, a couple of rounds of those. But then in June 2023, staff issued a stop work order. The building was vertical and we were still waiting those CUPs and SDPs. And staff's concern was if they don't meet that CUP, it could result in tearing down of, of the existing building. So we did work with the applicant, got the August twenty-three CUP request. So they were looking at permitting the proposed building. Again, did not meet all of the I-35 overlay, but they provided some, some offsets that would help kind of meet some of the requirements of that. So on August twenty-three, P&amp;Z did approve those proposed elevations. They did have a condition that some of the awnings, some additional awnings be added and, and placed in better areas. So over doors, walkways, not just over some of the bay doors. And then we issued our building permit in September twenty-three. Here we are, construction. Staff went out to do our final inspection and noticed there were some modifications to what was approved. So then we took that to P&amp;Z in December, and they did approve the awning modifications. So there were some shown on the rear of the building. Those got moved to the front, they were okay with that, but they did deny the door, a garage door modification. So the applicant is wanting to appeal that decision. So here's kind of what was previously approved. That's on the left, you'll see the awnings over those, those doors and the glass, and then you'll see what was installed. And so P&amp;Z was okay with moving them to the back, because they, they felt that's where the entrance was. It was more aesthetically pleasing, being these were delivery doors, they weren't sure that they were, were needed. So you have a couple of options tonight. You can approve the requested appeal and allow the solid garage doors. You can also appeal with modifications. You can propose any, any modifications to that that you feel you deem necessary, or you can deny the requested appeal. So if you have any questions on the project, I'll be glad to answer those. And then again, the applicant and tenant of the building are here this time. So go ahead and turn it over to you, Mayor.
All right. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Lutz. Would you all like to hear from the applicants, get their, their version of it before we go into it?
Hello, my name is Bobby Spears, resident in City of Kyle. I'd first like to thank y'all for your public service and your time and everything. And I would like to take a minute to, to thank staff and apologize to staff for helping getting us through this project. I make no excuses. Normally, we rely on the architect of record and the engineers of record to handle things with you all. And somewhere around late 2021, in 2022, the built, we as the builder received what we thought was the permit from the architect. It was the stamped drawings from Richard Emerson, said permit drawings. And somewhere down the line, I guess there was some, it wasn't permanent chaos or anything. And we're having a hard time getting a hold of the architect and stuff and staff. So I inserted myself, since I live in Kyle, to be the go-between, which couldn't have been easy, between ProSource, architect, the engineer, and City of Kyle to try to figure out what's going on. And that couldn't have been easy on staff, because I'm not an engineer and architect. I was just trying to push through there and everything. And I'd also like to thank and apologize to Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, the architect didn't show up to that meeting, I was flying solo. I didn't have the authority to change or make modifications to the exterior of the building or make recommendations. So I wasn't trying to be combative, I was just using the ammunition I had, which was try to talk about code and try to get through there. That being said, I'd like to introduce y'all to Jimmy Bonner. He's the president of ProSource, and he does have the authority and the ability to changes, awnings, whatever we need to do to get everything right with you all on the exterior of the building, the I-35 corridor and everything else. So this time I'd like to turn the mic over to him.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for your time here tonight. As Bobby said, I'm willing to entertain, have the authority to entertain whatever modifications that y'all might entertain presenting to us. We are very, very proud to be in Kyle. We're anxious to become contributing members of Kyle and generating jobs and tax base and all the fun things that businesses do. We, we love our building. You might say it's turned into a beautiful baby, it was just a really hard delivery. Especially, you know, I'm new to ProSource. I've been in my industry for thirty-five, going on thirty-six years. I started as president of ProSource in January of this year. So a lot of the legacy of issues here I'm unaware of was, had no involvement in. But what I am going to be involved in is a solution, and I can, and I can help deliver solution pretty rapidly. And you'll have my, my word and my sincere commitment to get us to that. And the way this business has gone, the way this piece of work has gone, is not, not in the least indicative of the kind of citizen that we will be for this community. That's not how we do business. I regret it. It's definitely not going to be represented by how I allow my company to do business. So my apologies to everybody here for any inconvenience that we've caused through this process, but I'm all about the solution. I'm happy to entertain what you have, and we eagerly wait to hearing from each, each of you or anybody who wants to comment. Thank you, sir.
All right, well, I, I really appreciate you sort of acknowledging that this process has, has been really jacked up. And I think you've frustrated several people in, that you've, you've been dealing with, and you probably got some of that feedback at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So on that part, I can't, I can't say a whole lot, but I did take these photos, so I want, I just want to, and I just had Grant throw them up there. He's very quick and good at what he does. So these were taken like three hours ago, right before I came to the meeting. The front of the building facade is, I would say, is, is up to standard. The back of the, the back of the facade, the bottom left picture, those are roll-up doors for warehouse trucks to enter and exit. I, that, so, and then the top left is literally standing in the exact same spot. Top left is Kyle Chapman Auto. That building is new, even though it doesn't look new. They, they came and requested a variance two, maybe three years ago. I can't remember my dates, but it's been within the last few years. The, the, the reason I don't remember is because variance requests don't come to the city council. They go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But this is a situation where Planning and Zoning unanimously gave that Kyle Chapman. I mean, you can hit it with a rock, you see the back, the back roll-up doors, a hundred percent under the I-35 overlay, every requirement that you have to follow, they had to follow. But what they did was they came to the Planning and Zoning Commission first and asked permission to put roll-up doors and R-panel and red iron all over their building. I didn't want to, I didn't think it was right to do it, but the Planning and Zoning Commission understood the value of Kyle Chapman Motors and what they've been in the society, and it's in the back behind the dealership that was former gas station. They had a big, long, robust discussion about it and unanimously gave it. I feel quite confident that if you had approached the Planning and Zoning Commission with that mindset, you would have gotten at least probably the roll-up doors, because you don't really, the, the glass on the back behind, is, it's I-35 overlay standard designed to increase beauty in retail areas. But this is an industrial facility, and those doors have a very specific utility, and glass shouldn't be there, in my opinion. But at the same time, you're also supposed to put in awnings, which you presented to the city council or to the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of 2023, what you were going to build. And they said yes, and then it didn't get built that way. Staff had to get involved and stop, stop you from moving forward. And then you tried to get staff to just administratively approve it, which they can't do. So just, you're just not following the rules. You've not followed the rules in the last eighteen months. And I mean, I only know about it recently, but it, I, is, is any of what I'm saying wrong? Do you deny or dispute any of what I'm saying at this point? So you're, you're, you're in a, you're in a position that's tough, but, so I have a proposed solution on this, because it is a very fairly simple and straightforward case. But if, if y'all, if somebody wants to jump in and add to it at this point, you're, you're welcome, you're welcome to. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say to the builder, I mean, starting concrete before you got a permit, I mean, drop, that, that's a big construction lift. I mean, without a permit, I mean, we could have gone and made you jackhammer that out. I mean, it, it would have been that big, but all through this process, it almost felt like you were saying, forget the City of Kyle. I mean, forget the rules, forget everything. I mean, that's just not acceptable. The only saving grace you have right now is that I know that ProSource is a great company, because I've purchased a lot of product from ProSource, from their North Austin location. So I know the people that work for them, I know the value of that. So that's probably the only saving grace right here, but really, I'd like to say, you know what? Let's go back to square one in a part of me, because I don't want people to come in here and say that they don't have to follow our rules, our ordinances. There's, there's a reason we have rules and ordinances, is to keep people safe, to keep structures right, especially in our overlay, but to make sure that we are building some, a quality product for the citizens of Kyle. And that's really, really important. I've been in commercial all my life, and I know that this isn't not the rules or steps you take, you always follow. I mean, if I would have done something like this up in Austin where I'm putting my buildings together, doing my, you know, remodels, I mean, they would have tore, made me tear everything down. I mean, they're, they're, they're strict, I mean, super strict. And I think maybe we, I'm very anti-Austin sometimes, but sometimes now I understand why those rules are there and why they're the way they are, because of instances like this where people say, you know what? Forget the city, I'm just going to do it my way. And that's not the way to do it, but I'm going to tell you right now, the only saving grace right now is that ProSource has been a really good retail place that I bought a lot of product from, I've used them for decades, their people are pretty amazing. I know they'd be a good access for, a, a great resource for Kyle as moving forward. But, yeah, just letting you know that I'm not really happy with the attitude of bringing this building up. I mean, just asking for forgiveness later. I mean, it just doesn't work. I mean, that's, that's how, you know, buildings aren't built to the right specifications. That's where later on you have cracked foundations where you have wall, tilt walls that are pulling apart. I mean, there's a reason there's codes and there's a reason why there's inspections, we need to follow that. Mayor.
I just want, I'm so sorry, I take full accountability. I, I learned it, I learned not to, we're working off the engineer drawings, and I take full accountability. I learned, I learned a lot, my lesson, or a lot, I know I need to be more active with asking, asking the architect and saying, are you sure this is right? And asking the engineers, instead of just working off of the plans given. I make no excuses, I take full accountability, and I apologize.
So, so how is it that Kyle Chapman, right across from you, a small business that does not do construction projects all the time, understood that they needed to ask permission to not follow the rules? That's really kind of what the question is.
Well, the architect did, did the CUP, the original CUP. I was working off the engineered permit drawings that I didn't get the, I guess, the architect's CUP, which was more of a rendering, rendering. I was working off the stamped drawings that had the tilt wall from the engineers. And again, I'm making no excuses, I just didn't realize that what the architect submitted to and got the approval for was, it was prior, that was, the prior approval was different than the engineer drawings with the engineered stamp. I didn't, I didn't realize it, so I was working off the engineered stamp drawings, which has a different elevation, which was in the permit set, and I take full account, I just didn't. So that's why during the second CUP, I, when they asked, I couldn't answer for why the architect or this and that. I'm like, I, I don't know, and he didn't show up, so, and it's not, I, I should have asked a question. I just want to say I apologize, I should have asked the question, and I will ask, make sure the architect or engineer, I'm going to go, hey, let me see, let me see what's going on and be more active in the City of Kyle. If I'm building in the City of Kyle, I live here, just verify it. I've learned a lot with dealing with staff. Now I know really how to verify if the architects or engineers are doing what they say they're doing or if they have what they have or anything else. I just blindly went with the engineered drawings and that was my mistake, and I apologize.
Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, thank you for coming up here and saying all these things. I, I'm having a really hard time with this one, because, you know, like, I totally understand, I understand the predicament that you're in now. But I, the thing that I'm struggling with is your time to ask for forgiveness and was a long time ago. And now here we are, it's like you guys got caught and then came forward and now are asking to not get in trouble for it. That's kind of how it feels from, from my perspective at least. And I feel like it sets up, I, I'm far from, I know nothing about building buildings and I'm probably the least experienced in terms on that subject on this dais. But I can say with certainty that I believe something like this would feel, would set a, a bad precedent moving forward for other people who are wanting to build in our city. And, but with that said, it's like I really appreciate the fact that you want to invest in our city and you want to plant roots in our city, and that's a really hard thing to, to think about right now. So I'm, I, did you have something that you wanted to?
I do, but I'm going to let, I'm going to let Zuniga go next.
Because that's my saving grace.
Yeah, I want to say thank you for, I guess, admitting your wrongs. But the process is kind of where I have a trouble with. I think that we would have given you, or I would have, you know, looked at a variance when, if it didn't really match the functionality. And we do have the code, and so my issue is that, you know, we have the code for these overlay standards. And if we lift them now, then that may snowball the next builder and say, well, you know, y'all did this here and y'all, y'all didn't do this here. And so when I did do a little bit of the research, you mentioned Academy didn't do it, Costco didn't do it in the overlay 35 standard. So you kind of felt like, well, I could do it too. I don't know what the situation was with them, I don't know the council that was then, back then, but now we're trying to really push for, you know, looking nice where we can with, in working with developers around the I-35 overlay, because that is what we want to enhance. And so that, and then, you know, then you, there was a history about the, the color here, the blue paint, and I think that you changed that, so you, 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 you made it better, you, you broke up the blue.
The ProSource did, and we some.
Somebody did.
Mm-hmm. Sent that over to Kayla Sharp. I didn't realize that the architect, the doors were different. I reacted once I realized they were different after the fact. I would, we weren't trying to pull a fast one, it's hard to pull a sneaky when one, I was just trying to give y'all, when one's half-glass and one's, a dock door is not half-glass. If I'd have known ahead of time, I would have been more than happy to get a variance. I just honestly didn't realize that the architect's drawings were different than the engineer's drawings. And so whenever. And so whenever it got, when Jason pointed it out, I was just trying to find a, a solution that I could help find.
It sounded like you're, you're kind of getting really desperate because you also said that you have inventory here that you don't want people to see and glass would then let people see your inventory. And then you had, uh, Burke, you know, police reports, which nobody could find. A police report had been made here. So I didn't like the stories that were invented. So I, it appeared to me like there was a bit desperation in, in just pushing with this.
I, I will say, um, apologize. We did have theft there and I don't know why I couldn't find the police reports. But we had the cameras, the police got the cameras. But that's the inventory and stuff, I'm going to let them speak on it. They're the one that fed me that to speak with y'all on, um, so.
As tenant of building, sir, my concern with glass doors and warehousing, and I've been in this type of warehousing for a lot of years. Uh, but it's going to, they're all going to get damaged. The trucks are going to back into that glass. The forklifts are going to back in or hit that glass. I, I've just, you just, and some of y'all probably are familiar with warehousing. You almost cannot make up the things that go on in a warehouse. It's, 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 it's like watching an episode of The Office. You think it can't be true, but it seems like you've seen it before. So, uh, I'm worried about that kind of liability, that safety. I don't like my inventories that are somewhat easily stolen and quite valuable. Like a box of tile this big, weighs about 20 pounds, can be 80 bucks a box. And, and people being able to see into that inventory and, and a insecure environment like the back of a warehouse facility, to me, that's inviting. I'm just like putting a menu out there and I'm teasing everybody to come get something. And we have had some theft out there. Now, I can't explain why you didn't find a police report, but we did have items stolen from the job while, while it was in construction. Okay, not since it's been secure, just to be clear and fair, okay?
Well, all right, so to be clear and fair.
Yes, sir.
The awnings, which are, you were supposed to do that you presented, have nothing to do with safety.
No, sir, they do not.
And they are still not out here, even though you've been told you have to put them in and you don't have any argument to make.
No, no, it, I'm happy if, if we need to put those awnings on the back, happy to do it. The awnings were moved to the front. That, all this was pre-drawing and I'm not trying to pour me this, I'll take what I got coming. But all of this was in, in route and delivery coming down the aisle when I took my position with this company in January. So I was executing what I thought would be.
This January?
Of '24.
'24.
Yes, sir. Okay, so this building, we, the land was purchased like 2019. I think we, they tried to start construction in 2020, put it off for COVID. This thing has been coming a long, long time.
You probably wish you could go back to 2020 and build back then.
Boy, don't you know it.
Hey, Grant, can you put the, the architectural drawings that they submitted to P&amp;Z and had approved up on the screen?
I will give you credit for working really hard to come up with the appeal about the code and how this is a garage door, not an overhead door.
I'm just trying to make everybody happy. I've learned a lot.
I know you tried hard there.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Well, we did move the awnings, there was no awnings on the front. So they, we moved them from the back where the overhead doors were to the front of the building. And we added some on the front of the building. So we have more awnings than that were submitted. And except for just having the awnings on the back and no awnings on the front where the storefront is, they took the overhead door awnings and moved them to the front and then added awnings above the windows.
So I, I, I can attest to people looking into overhead doors. Um, all our buildings in Austin are the same way.
So to be clear, we, we have not successfully required a single business along the I-35 corridor to put glass, including me. I got a variance to do it. Uh, Chapman got a variance, the industrial slash warehouse building right down here by the railho uh, yard, close to Yarrington, same thing, the backside. It doesn't make sense to require that to be glass. Glazing is, is for your front-facing facade, so that.
I just want you to understand, loud and clear, Mr. Mayor, I get it that we didn't follow process correctly.
Yeah, but it's, but, but, but what I'm getting back at is that you're, you're falling on this argument that we agree with, that it may, well, I think most of us probably agree with that the glass on the back for warehouse distribution in and out doesn't make sense. But, but what we're trying to get at is the standard, which is what the I-35 overlay has. And included in that standard is what was previously approved, which you can see here, which includes very nice awnings on the backside. So why weren't those awnings installed? Even though you've been trying to get permission to move forward from staff for months now and they've told you, you need to put these awnings up, but they're still not there.
My understanding, and you feel free to chime in here, is that we were told that it was acceptable to move the awnings from the back to the front. That it, that it, we had added awnings, so we actually put more than what we're in. I'm, I'm repeating what I was told, so if I'm wrong, kick me out the way.
Sorry, Timman. Uh, yes, so I think as part of the appeal, once we identified discrepancies between the approved and the, and the constructed plans, um, they went ahead and said, hey, we know we didn't put them on the back, we put them on the front. That was part of their, their ask to P&amp;Z. And that is what P&amp;Z did approve. So, um, right now, they're not required to be over those overhead doors. But, um, they didn't, they didn't offer any other. There was some discussions on, on faux windows on the garages, stuff like that. But, uh, nothing, nothing was done on the back.
That doesn't even look good. We, we, they, they tried to consider doing that at the place over here on, just off 81 and it, it didn't work.
There were never awnings on the front of the building?
Well, the awnings that are on the front of building don't look like this. Like you said, they're very small. They look like what's in that in, installed, requested above the door. Very small pieces and they look pretty good on the front. But, you know, these on the back are a little bit more robust, there's a paint stripe there.
Um, the, those awnings, that, that big awning and during, I think the original CUP that got approved, they requested that, that be smaller, not so bold, I do believe. If I remember, if I recall right and give.
Um, yeah, so the discussion during the first approval, not, not these images here, was, um, P&amp;Z wanted to see additional awnings over actual functional doors. Um, they did feel that the giant awnings over those, those larger garage bay doors were, were in excess.
So what was the reason for not painting the stripe? You see the stripe on the front, there it is in the back, but it didn't get painted. What's the argument there?
We, we resubmitted, uh, to Caleb Sharp, the adjusted paint color, the paint scheme, uh, changed. Once we got it from, uh, ProSource, we sent it into Caleb Sharp and it was approved. I don't have a problem putting the blue paint stripe on the back. It's not, I'm okay with it, if, if they're okay with it. It just wasn't on the new, the updated approved, uh, elevations of the paint scheme. So I, I, I don't have a good reason.
Because all I see is what was a previously approved August 24.
We did receive the, uh, the change in the paint color and that was some discussion on the blue. Um, staff felt fine to approve the, the paint color, but we did not, we did not look at it as an authorization to modify the paint schematic around the building, so.
Well, I'm just looking for things we can ask you to do outside of the doors because I don't think that actually gets us anything. I do, I do agree with your, your broader point, but not because you made it, but because we really need to change our overlay rules with regards to roll up doors on industrial facilities, uh, in my opinion. Because like I said, we've given everyone a variance on that, which is just crazy to me that you're here having to get a variance from the council.
It's crazy to me too.
I'm not shy from being in the city, I've been here a lot. I've sat in here, if I would have known, I had no prob, if I would have realized it, the, the architect one was different than the other one, I would have done variance a long time ago. I just honestly, I didn't realize there were two different, dramatically different.
Mr. Mayor, the bu, bu, blue stripes, no problem, absolutely none. My only ask on the awnings for the back is can y'all give us some direction to, or do you want us to like mock some drawings and send them to y'all for approval? Can you give me some direction on how to respond to that?
So my recommendation to the council, this is where I'll ask council because only a few of us have talked and I don't know where the votes are on this. My recommendation to council would be to require you to put the awnings back in everywhere, just like at the front and, and to also put the blue stripe on the, uh, on the paint. And it doesn't have to be the blue, uh, uh, tarp ones because those are going to fade and wear out faster.
You're happy with these that match the back to the front?
Match the back to the front.
Okay.
And, but you don't, wouldn't, that's what I would personally, I'd like to hear from, from the council if that's a proposal that y'all can get behind or if you just want to tell them, sorry, you got to build it that way.
I, I think getting the awnings in the back will be a huge win, getting the, the rest of it painted. Uh, I'm not a big fan of having glass doors in the back. I mean, it's just something, or even with forklifts. I mean, I've been in my buildings where I drove up to one of my buildings and the guy there and the forklift goes right through the door because it didn't raise it up high enough. I mean, so I, I definitely have seen it a million times. But what I do want to do is make sure that you guys know that, I mean, we took this serious. I mean, we want y'all to know that. Any other contractor watching, our staff will catch it. I'm letting y'all know. We have got a great staff, they're going to catch when you're doing something wrong. But let's get the stripe, let's get the awnings and then we can move forward.
Yeah, and I, I actually would just add to that, that, you know, that, because I had a conversation with the owner right before I, uh, I drove up here. And I, I wanted to make sure that he, that he understands, that you understand and that others understand that we, we do want to be business friendly. But that does not mean that business is Wild Wild West here. We want folks coming here not because we cut corners or we don't have good regulations and you can get away with things or build cheaper. None of those are the reasons why we want folks here. We want, when you say you want to come to Kyle and partner with us, we want to do what we say and want you to do what you say. We want to make it, uh, transparent and have a lot of great communication. We want to celebrate you and we want you to have success in the city of Kyle. This just really is, is not the way to do it, so. All right, I would, I will, oh, I will make a motion, uh, to, uh, uh, what is this? All right, to.
Approve the CUP with amendments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the CUP with the amendment, uh, that, and requirement that before they receive their CUP, before they receive it, that they have, they have to install, uh, awnings on the back, uh, just as on the front over every door and that they also have to add, uh, the, the paint accents to match the back from the front.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a clarification. I noticed, if you noticed in the, in the images here, um, these awnings are just structural right now. They're not actual functional. So I just want to verify that those are going to be, uh, finished and covered. Um, so that there's no topping on those, rain would just go right through.
So you're saying they're, they're not done on the front?
Uh, no, so if you can see here, you can kind of see through, they'd never had the cover. I believe the, the panel or the original proposal called for a three-quarter inch plywood with felt and I think 24 gauge corrugated tin, like a roof. Um, but, uh, those haven't been installed. So I just want to ensure that, that if you can, to, to make sure everybody's on the same page, that that get.
That is in the plan for completion. We, we, we just bumped that to the end because we had other things that we're working on trying to get.
All right, so same motion with this consideration, uh, uh, included in the motion.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
I get a clarification real quick. I, so the awnings, to put the, we're putting the roof in the awning so it's not sticking up. So it looks like a structural awning, but it's functional, is that?
I, whatever he says is okay, I want you to do it, okay? That's where we're at. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by the mayor, second by Mayor Protem, is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor McKinney.
Uh, I was going to request that, uh, the accent color go all the way around instead of just front and back. Uh, that, uh, that one side is more visible from the highway, uh, from I-35 than the back is.
Yeah, wrapped around.
I feel like just making it uniform is just going to do what we're trying to accomplish. Just make our city as pretty as it can be.
The blue, the blue band?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to, motion to amend the motion. Would I get a second? I did, I did, all right. M, m, motion to amend to make the blue wrapping go all the way around the building.
Second.
Uh, all right, motion to amend by mayor, second by Mayor Protem, is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Any discussion on the main motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
I need a second. They got fired up there at the end. All right, next up is agenda, shut up. Agenda item 25, receiver report, hold the discussion, provide staff direction regarding selecting moderator for the 2025 Dialogues for Peace and Progress celebrating Black History Month, Ms. Songye.
Hello, council and mayor. Um, happy to present the, uh, uh, discussion and get your feedback on and direction for selection of moderator for our next upcoming Dialogue for Peace and Progress in February. Uh, so we'll be having it on Thursday, February 13th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM right here in Kyle City Hall. It will also be streamed online and on our face, uh, on Facebook and Kyle10. Just a little bit of background, uh, in August 2023, council approved a resolution that created the policy and criteria for selection of moderators and panelists, including that, um, council would select the moderator prior to every dialogue. Just a little refresher because it's been a second. Uh, moderators will be elected city officials or appointed city board or commission or committee members. But as you see, there's an asterisk there. Um, council also, um, from prior dialogues, has the ability to, uh, select members from the community to be a co-moderator, whether they are a board member or not. Moderators are also, uh, must not be running for office in, or representing city of Kyle, uh, running for office that represents city of Kyle in many ways. Uh, they will be selected by council prior to each dialogue for peace and progress. And, uh, just as their responsibilities, they will be responsible for choosing the panelists from our pool of eligible applicants, outlining the discussion topics and questions for our panelists and of course moderating the actual dialogue. Um, I did reach out to council in early December, um, asking if any were interested. Mayor Protem Rizzo did actually, uh, say that he would be interested in moderating the dialogue. But I would like to bring this for y'all's discussion and feedback and direction.
And Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioner Cohen did say she'd like to co-moderate with me. So, uh, if council chooses, uh, myself and, uh, county commissioner, Dr. Michelle Cohen, uh, I'd like y'all to consider it.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
No objections.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, um, oh shoot, which option is this?
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm looking at the options.
I think it would probably be option number two, which would bring back a resolution for a council member as well as co-moderator, uh, Cohen.
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, agenda item, uh, 25, which, is it still 25? Um, option two, uh, bring back a resolution to appoint, uh, Mayor Protem Rizzo and, uh, county commissioner, uh, Dr. Michelle Cohen, uh, as the co-moderators.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Hyzer, second by Councilmember Toby Estes. We approved, uh, agenda 25, making Rizzo and Cohen the moderators. Is, are there discussions on the motion? Now my tongue is tied. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 26, consider approval of the resolution amending, updating, restating the city of Kyle rules of council. Uh, as you know, uh, well, or probably know, in the city charter, it requires that uh, we are basically the, um, keeper of our own rules within certain limits. And so every year, uh, we have a document that we look at that talks about, uh, the engagement of citizen comments, it talks about, uh, who's going to be seated where, it talks about the nature of our discussions and how we discuss and the difference between the discussion before a motion and after a motion. Uh, also it says that, uh, for example, uh, that, uh, one person speaks, they have the floor, they finish speaking, then the next person speaks and then the person who spoke initially doesn't get the, uh, floor back until everyone's had a chance. Uh, a lot of rules, uh, and generally my, the way I've tried to do it is, uh, when the rules serve us, uh, everybody knows and so we use it. But there are some times when it's more of a guide and we just have a more, uh, free-flowing conversation. I try to be, um, you know, aware of that. But that said, uh, we, we've amended and changed the rules many times, added to it. And so if there's, if anybody had any particular questions about the rules uh, or, uh, desire to amend anything, I'm open to it. Councilmember Harris.
I have several, um, questions, um, page one, agenda item one, uh, or B1. For agendas on the first and third Tuesdays, the combined meetings allow for council to request four total items for both of those, only four to, the council members can only.
We, we changed that up several times. It used to be real clear that everyone can sponsor up to three items and, uh, on each agenda. And, uh, but we changed it to say if you have a cosponsor, I believe that you can get it up to four. But we've never, we've never really tested the, the limits of that.
So it seems that it makes more sense to make it per meeting?
It is per meeting, I'm sorry, all right, so what does it say again?
It says for the combined two meetings.
The combined two meetings, the first meeting being the executive session. So, and really, you can't put anything on executive session. You can, you can request certain items that has to go through the attorney. You don't have sponsor items on executive session.
Okay, that's not how I interpreted that. I interpret that to be the first and third Tuesdays of the month.
Yes, no, so everything, so I see the ambiguity, but everything as it relates to your.
First and third Tuesdays.
Right, but that's, you get up to four items under those rules, both on the first and on the, on the third Tuesday.
Could we make that clear?
Sure. I'm trying to pull it up.
Because that was not clear to me.
Council, if you have substantive changes that we want to go through tonight, I can take notes and I can craft some language.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
We can bring it back next meeting.
Right, but we can, unless there's more, that's not something we, I don't want to bring it back and vote on it again unless we have to.
Yeah, this one's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Do you understand what she's asking you there? Okay.
On page three?
Let's, let's take a vote on that and then go to your next one. That's so that we can keep, keep it going, if that's okay. So the, you want to motion that, just in general language?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the language be clarified to indicate that each council meeting, the first and the third Tuesdays, four items can be brought at each meeting.
Correct. Second, is there a motion by Councilor Harris, second by the mayor, that would clarify that the amount of items that you can sponsor are relative to a single meeting and not a combined over multiple meetings? I think, is there discussion on that motion? I think that was intended to talk about executive session because we have special meeting and then a regular meeting, but I, I see the confusion there. Any discussion?
So to clarify, four total for each meeting that a council member.
Each regular meeting.
Each regular meeting. That makes for a long night.
Well, it's, 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 it's four total, but Heiser, you got to help me because you were, you were a big part of this discussion last year. But I believe it's, you get two items individually and then you can go to a third with a sponsor. And then if one's a proclamation, maybe you can add one. I can't remember exactly what it says. I haven't looked at it.
The change when I brought it up last year was to have three. And then we brought up, what about proclamations? And that's why it became four.
And that's per meeting.
With the cosponsor.
Per meeting, yes. Like, at this meeting, when it started, the regular meeting, that's what the spirit was.
And then just, we have 27 regular meetings, so that's, you have a total of, there's six council members, times four, times 27 is the total number of council-sponsored items that are possible. So I think it's quite.
I don't think anybody's pushed that limit at this point.
Not lately.
Not lately.
This guy.
You have a proclamation and then you add your two items.
Yeah, we want stuff of substance.
All right, any further discussion on that? All right, I'm going to call a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Councilor Harris, go ahead.
Page three, item C, dais. It talks about using electronic communications while seated at the dais with each other. It does not include text and emails from the public while on the dais. Was there discussion about that?
Yeah, that's been discussed many times through the years, that particular.
Yeah, I've only been here one year, darling.
So, so the key, the key, I know, I'm just, I could almost recite it. So the key is the first clause, the council member shall exercise professionalism with texting, emailing, or participating. And so the professionalism is the key. So you're not supposed to, number one, you can't break quorum. Number two, this is a public meeting, so you're not supposed to be having sidebars. It's the same as like reaching over and talking like this. So professionalism applies to that as well. But generally speaking, you are still allowed to communicate if you want to communicate, but you're not supposed to be violating the Open Meetings Act or having sidebar conversations with your colleagues.
That second sentence is specifically referencing an open, a walking quorum issue that happened in a different city. So we're just making sure that that doesn't happen here where people were at the dais texting each other.
And I think, I think that's appropriate to be there, but you're allowed to, if someone in the public texts you while you're in a meeting, you're allowed to look at it. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that, as far as I can tell. Nothing wrong with that.
Guessing items with members of public would not implicate the Open Meetings Act. What does implicate the Open Meetings Act is conversations among a quorum of.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Another clarif, oh, yeah, we don't need anything of that. So I'm voting. This does not, we've had Zoom calls. This does not address Zoom calls. And we've had council members go on and off the Zoom call, even though they, they were present during some portion of that. And that a prior section says that you must vote if you are present. But if you go off the Zoom call, if you shut down your camera, you're considered absent. I think we need to address that. Either you are present or you are not present. So was that discussed?
So the way I understand it is that you must be present on screen and audible or raise your hand visually in order to vote. Now, if in the middle of a conversation, but while no action is being taken, if the screen glitches out or you run to the bathroom, just like what we do when we run to the bathroom, then you would be absent for that period. But you're not necessarily marked absent if you come back and take the vote visibly and publicly. But if you don't, then you are absent for that vote.
Well, yeah.
But I see what you're saying because.
But it says if you're present, you're required to vote.
Right, but I'm.
You can't abstain. You're required to vote.
So I think my answer to that would be if, in terms of the spirit of it in particular, is, is if somebody is abusing that or doing something that they're clearly ducking a vote or something along those lines, then they would be in violation of the rules of council. Because that, the charter is what compels people to vote, that you shall vote on every item. And I think that's a really important rule because we don't always take, there are tons of times when we probably would prefer just not to vote.
Well, that has happened in the year that I've been here.
Okay.
If we are including Zoom calls, maybe we need to.
So you're saying, you have, the screen can never go off?
You have to vote on each item. If you're on a Zoom call, you are.
If you're present, no, I see that. I think that's okay.
Vote on each item, just like you were.
If you're participating in a meeting, you must vote on each item. But again, if there's a, if there's a situation where you go to the bathroom and you miss a vote and we're running through a bunch of items, there's a difference between, something may happen and a vote may be missed.
It doesn't say here you're excused because you went to the bathroom in anywhere, any place in this document.
We've taken votes here on the dais where somebody gone with the bathroom.
That's what I'm saying.
Someone on Zoom would have to be held to the same standards as someone who's here. So you can't, you can't say because you're on Zoom, you can't go to the bathroom. But if you're sitting here, you can go to the bathroom.
I agree.
You're going to want the same standards.
This, this, our rules say that you must vote on each item.
So here would be the way.
You can't skip out on it.
So, so the way to handle that, and this is actually a good, a good opportunity for us to discuss. If the rules of council in someone's eyes or in their mind are being violated for something like that, hey, we're getting ready to call a vote, so and so is in the bathroom, I call a point of order, they must be here to vote, then that point of order must be sustained because it is compliant with the rules of council and we will wait until that person comes back in order to vote. So that, that would be the way to handle it. So it, you know.
I think my recommendation would be to not have special rules for Zoom in the rules for council because at some point, you know, the Open Meetings Act could change. We could no longer be allowed to participate by Zoom and then we'd have to go back and change the rules of council. I think the same rules apply however you're attending the meeting and we just.
I just wanted that to be clear, that that, that rule applies. I think there's one other.
Discussing an item prior to a motion?
Yeah.
Versus handling a motion? Yeah, we don't follow that one very well.
That's one of the things.
We never have. I've tried, but it's, it's clunky. So the idea is supposed to be, in terms of, in terms of parliamentary procedure is when an item gets presented, it's presented and then we may ask questions. But we refrain from debating, stating our opinion, trying to call until a motion and a second's been made. Because technically, you can't debate, what you're supposed to debate is a motion. And if there's no motion, you can't debate. That's Robert's Rules of Order. And that's the way it's written and it's, it's sort of finessed in there a little bit, but you know, we don't always do it. But I try to call for a vote once I feel like we're ready to take the next step. And that's not always right. A lot of times councils will, you can't open discussion. You can't, no one speaks until a motion and a second is delivered, but I just never found that to be helpful because we're not always ready to make a motion. We don't exactly know what the motion is going to be. Like we, this is a fluid thing. We're all talking, so.
I understand that. I just wonder if we need to change the wording on that in any way.
Well, so like I was saying at the beginning, I like having the rules of council written in such a way that it's clear what the expectation is. Even though there are times when that it's more free-flowing and we are the judge of our members. So when it's clear to me that everybody is vibing and doing right and the discussion is, it's not, the rules of council then become the the obstacle to good discussion as opposed to the enabler of good discussion. And so I think, but I think you have to write it the way that it's supposed to be because I need to be able to call everyone to the rules of council. We're going to follow. It even says in there at some point, like the chair of the meeting can say, we're going to start following rules of council because we've gotten off the deep end or there's animosity or yelling over each other. And, and so it can, it can get to that point.
Okay.
So we're saying on that to continue to, agenda item number 18, blah, 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 blah. And this is your item. And let's say it's Robert or let's say it's Heiser. We can't make the motion until, of course, let them present it of whatever the item is or whatever the city is. That we can't make the motion right off the bat and then second it?
You're supposed to make the motion early and then debate the motion.
Yeah.
And so, but like, you know, that does just practically, it just doesn't work that way all the time. So that's according to Robert's rules. There's nothing in the charter that makes us do that. We are the judge of our own members. This is, we decide how we want to be with regards to this.
Yeah, we have leniency. I like what you're saying, mayor. Sometimes you don't even know what the motion's going to be, so you prematurely start discussing.
Such as this discussion.
Topic. I just, I just went off on a rant with him about it because.
But in the, in the item about parking, for example, when everybody, everybody's got something they want to say and questions they want to ask and everybody's wanting to get in, that's when it's like, hang on, hang on, hang on. And I have to, I'm required to, based on who I see, I call the order, you know, and if someone, and I can sometimes tell when someone was asking questions and they felt like they got cut off and if that's the case, I have to defer to Robert's rules.
We should have asked for a motion to debate on that one because technically, because you and I were having a good back and forth on it.
Technically, but I think, I think, I think we got, we got the result we wanted, the good discussion was had. And I'm, I, that's what I, that's what I care about, is did everybody feel like they were able to say what they wanted to say? That they got their points across, that they weren't talked over and that there was some order?
I will note, if members of council think that the mayor as the chair is not, you know, enforcing the rules in a way that they feel is appropriate, they have a right at that point to do a point of order or something to say we need to follow the rules.
That's what I was trying to reference earlier. You said it exactly. If you think that I'm not following or whoever's the chair is not following the rules and you're being slighted in some way or someone's being disadvantaged, you can call a point of order and request that we follow Robert's Rules of Orders explicitly. And that must be sustained because it's written right there. If, if, if that's the way we go. Hopefully, we don't get to that because that becomes very cumbersome, but.
Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with the explanation. I just, it just looked like it wasn't exactly what we do all the time. And then my last question is close debate to vote. It doesn't say that we have any time limit. One, one council member could choose to speak for 30 minutes or an hour.
They can't though, because you can call a point of order on something, and someone on doing that, but you are correct. We've discussed, Councilor Toby Estes has discussed many times when our meetings go until midnight and thereafter, putting time limits on, on council members. But that also becomes burdensome and doesn't necessarily serve our best interest. And if, if we need it because our meetings are going long or some one person, one individual or two individuals are taking too much time, we can amend those rules at, at any point in time, put time limits on stuff.
If I may speak on that, it was number one, time management. Because like I said, by now, we probably lost about 70% of our audience because it gets us late. And we want to be efficient. That was the whole issue as well. Because doing council for five years now, there's been times where we'll be at 1 o'clock in the morning and we're going back and forth and we're barely on agenda item number 10. So I've always pressed for time limits on each agenda item of 10 minutes per each one and then have that discussion. I just felt that it was always sufficient while we're on the clock because it also tells the council member to do your homework beforehand. You know, to make sure you get your items, get your questions answered, have those debates ahead of time to where when it comes to the agenda, like I always look at it, it's game time. I've already done my practice. I've already got my emails. I've had my conversations and I know where I'm at on my votes. I think that leads up to the, okay, we're bringing agenda item number 10 and you should already know what you're voting on because you reviewed already the information there. And then the discussions between each other can come when, after the motion's made. But that was always my stance about the time limits.
And we can discuss it if you want to discuss timelines.
I personally feel like we need some limitation. Rather than calling a point of order and say, hey, my fellow council member, you know, you've taken up too much time. We should self-limit.
Because we also have to respect the city staff as well.
Yeah.
Who's been here all morning and all day and they're here in meetings too.
Well, I will say that in the last year, our meetings did get better. I mean, in terms of just the length of the meetings, that's partly because of the way staff presents the items. I think they do a really good job of presenting items and making clear what the situation is, what our options are. You know, sometimes we debate, but we haven't had a meeting go past midnight, including tonight's won't go past midnight most likely.
Probably not.
You know, and so I, I just, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Zimba, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was thinking about also maybe adding some things to our procedures. Not sure everybody feels about these, but when I was researching a few of the rules we should, we should think about. So during public comments, any counselor may request that any matter discussed during public comment be placed on a future council agenda. So that would mean that if someone from the audience has a particular concern or something that they would like more focus or attention, we don't have to wait a week, email Brian, hey, I'd like to put this on the agenda. Plus, it's already coming directly from the community. You know, so different, people have different needs and, you know, I like, I encourage people to come and speak.
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
No, these are, these are to amend it. I thought we're making, we could, we could propose changes.
Of course you can.
Yes, so this is a proposed change.
I don't think we were through a time limit yet.
Oh, we weren't done with time limit yet?
I don't think we resolved that.
Okay, go ahead. Keep talking about the time.
Really quick, I mean, some of these changes are, like I want a minute to think about them.
Yeah.
Do we have to take a vote on these changes tonight?
We have to adopt the rules of council.
Well, I know, I mean, but this wasn't in the backup material to have thought about prior to the meeting. So I'm hearing about this for the first time right now.
Yeah, because we have to draft if we want to change or keep it the same.
So what we put on the agenda was to adopt them as they currently, or to reaffirm them as they currently exist. If council has changes that they want us to bring back or things that they want us to look into to maybe bring back in the future, I'm taking notes. We'll take a list and we'll, we'll make those changes. If they're substantive, I would recommend not approving them today and bringing them back, depending on what they are.
I feel like that's a pretty substantive process change in how meetings operate from one to the next.
And the time limits, I've seen done different ways in different cities.
And what?
So that might be something that we'd have staff research and bring.
It's a very common procedure in many, in many cities, many boards. A public, a public.
It might be, it's just.
It's just maybe a suppression of not trying to get communication out there. I'm, I'm just putting ideas out there to make it better.
I want to consider your ideas.
Right, but it does not say that you have to put it on agenda item, but it's, it can be considered for agenda item.
But you have the ability to put up to four items. All of us do. All they need is one person to make an item and it's on.
Right, I can already put agenda items, but sometimes if I'm putting the agenda item, it's, it's more direct to the council, whereas if a resident had this, a concern and now it's coming from the resident that wanted it on the agenda.
So would that, then not count toward your four items?
So no, hang on. The question is, do we want to allow residents to put items on the agenda?
You can still count it as my item, but what I'm saying is that.
Then it's your item and you have the power to put it on. Are you just saying that you want to be able to like tap your nose to Brian after citizen comments to, to say, hey, I want that on the agenda?
Put that on the agenda, yeah. Like if someone came about the hogs and they want more, I want a firework study, but. But someone's talking about how loud they are and they want to have a discussion about that. I can tell Brian, just put that on an agenda item. That makes sense.
So you really don't even have to bring that to agendas. Like the next day when that resident came and talked to us about the hogs, I sent Brian an email and asked him what we could do about the issue. And we worked through that, so you don't, I didn't have to send a demo. I just asked staff what we could do, so you don't really have to bring it to something like that. Because staff will take care of stuff like that. It's not something we have to vote on as a dais.
The issue there, Miguel, though, is, is we have to approve the language that's gonna go on the agenda. So you might, you know, give them the signal.
We are gonna approve the way we word it, but.
After the fact.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're not saying that every resident is a council member. What we're saying is, I like that suggestion, let me consider it. And hey, think about that. I can put that on an agenda item.
Yeah, but you already have the power to do that one hundred percent.
Yes, I do, but.
And so you're saying you wanna be able to just say it from the dais as opposed to sending an email?
Yeah, yeah, like, hey, I'm having trouble with my street parking because I'm having trouble with my light or something.
I don't know.
I don't know, it just makes sense.
I can see how from, it's a signal to the community that we're hearing you and I, 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 I guess, I don't know.
I can tell you probably where a lot, that comes from in a lot of other cities. It's under the Open Meetings Act, you as council, when somebody gets up and makes public comment, you're very limited on what you're allowed to do because it's not on the agenda, but you can make a statement of fact or request that it be put on a future agenda.
Right.
A lot of agendas in other cities do say that. We already have a process where you can put it on, on an agenda, so if you wanna change it.
Statement of fact, well.
That's what's legally allowed.
Yes, but I understand, but a statement of fact can be correcting someone when they come up and say something that's factually incorrect, like what happened earlier. And so if I give a statement of fact back to them that that's factually incorrect, I'm engaging in debate. That can't be allowed.
That's, that's correct, but under the Open Meetings Act, you can make a statement of fact. You can't. So you could say, somebody gets up and says it's Wednesday and you could say, actually, it's Tuesday. That wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act. Now, if you start a debate and you're arguing back and forth, obviously, you're gonna, you, you have to be very careful how far you go because it's not on the agenda.
Well, I would very much like to give statements of facts from time to time.
Are you ready for my next two?
Go for it. Well, actually, we're still on time limits.
We're still on time limits.
Opened it up for, it's very ironic. So could, maybe we could have some, do some research on what others do and let us take a look at it. So for example, is, are we, are we timing each individual person? Or say maybe thirty minutes per item or forty-five minutes per item or something?
Yeah, there, there are different ways it's done.
We routinely do an hour on an item. It's just, but there are some items that are, that's why I don't like it so much.
There are different ways it's done.
Exactly, and then.
Some cities will do like number of times that a council member's allowed to talk on each item. Some of them will do a cumulative amount of time. You are then putting a burden on the city secretary to track how long each of you is talking. And so those are things to think about.
Can I ask a question to the group before we move on with more?
Well, hang on, we're on time limits first, then we're on this. We have to, now we have to have some order here, so. Are you wanna talk about the time limits?
I wanna just ask the group, like, are we poking holes just because this is on the agenda? Or are we trying to, is there a problem here we're really trying to solve for?
No, I'm just asking questions and there are some problems.
Have you ever heard of?
I'm willing to go with the flow here. These are all valid things to think about, but I'm just, we're not, I don't, I don't wanna take a vote on any of these things tonight.
Have you ever heard of the eight-hour rule? I wanna, I wanna talk about an eight-hour rule.
I love where this is heading.
The eight-hour rule is that no council member should request a staff time that goes beyond eight hours without going through the city manager. And then the city manager must share what this, what the, the proposed thing is. So, so no, no city council member should use more staff time than is needed. Do we have that policy? Is that something?
The policy is that council requests go through the city manager. So I think all council requests go through the city manager.
But is, but.
We don't talk to staff.
But do we ever have staff work on something?
Oh, yes.
More than eight hours on our own direction?
Do we ever have staff work on, well, you're, you're allowed to direct me. I work for you as well. But most staff requests do go through the city manager. I think the city manager does track the time spent on those requests, but I don't know how an eight-hour rule.
I like that one.
Do we have it defined though as an eight-hour rule? So like if it's thirty minutes, a council member should be able to get that done. But if, if it's forty minutes, it's just a courtesy thing. They're gonna research something for you, get you a quick information for something you got on the agenda. But if it starts to go into a full report, like Brian asked for a firework report, that might take some time. So I want other council members to know what I requested. And I don't wanna overgo beyond Brian's authority as a council member, so that needs to be. No, no, his, his authority, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go beyond my authority, you know.
With that suggestion.
What we do here is to, is to pave the, the road for others, you know, so. So we gotta have these defined boundaries.
I think it depends, right? It, it's, it's, I'll let you know if I think it's a significant request or if it's got a political implication or some kind of service or budget implication that the council needs to see. If it's, there's some high weeds in this area and I need, it's a code compliance issue and it's a problem that we haven't addressed, even if that takes fifteen hours, but it's something that's within our services that we need to handle, we're gonna handle it. So I think it just kinda depends on what it is. If it's a research project to spend a significant amount of staff time over the next two weeks to pull all this information together for you for something that's important to you, that may be something I can back and say, look, that's really, it needs to be a council directive because it's gonna change our priorities of what we're doing for the entire council based on your request. Or if the number of requests that I'm getting from individual council members are suddenly changing the priorities of topics and things that we can do as a staff, even if they're all small, but the number and the magnitude of those requests is impacting us, we may have to look at that. But right now, I, I would tell you, I don't think there's a problem to solve on that. It could be something that conceivable that you could have in the future, but I don't see that as an issue currently. If that's something you wanna put in the rules, you certainly could, but it's, it's, I just don't know if that's an issue that we have before us, really. I haven't seen it.
Right, it might not be something affecting us right now, so.
Yeah, and I think it's part of my job is to let you know that when it, when I see that there is an issue.
Right. Then the other one is that we should be able to get, ask for clarification from speakers during their public comments. Limited though to three minutes, so someone just, but you cannot, you, you cannot only limit the question to a clarification of speakers. Would that be something we could improve upon?
It's just you gotta interrupt them to do that and they get three minutes.
Yeah, no on that.
No matter how much we want to.
Okay, that's it, that's all I, that's all I wanted to ask about.
So maybe we could get some suggestions coming back with regards to time limits and what else? I, I don't think the time, I personally don't think the time limits is something that is worth our time to go, to go into. I think we're doing pretty good and I think this council's gonna gel well enough to be able to hold each other accountable. But if y'all want to, if you wanna go into it, I understand the desire. Many of us have had.
Just asking.
I, I, I do, but.
We will have the conversation.
We have, and so it gets to that point, right? And so here's the, the thing about the rule of councils, we have to affirm the way we're doing things, you know, but then at any point, you can, you can sponsor an item to bring the rules of council back and make recommendations to change if you see a problem and bring it up at any point in, in time, so.
Well, and you can always call for the motion.
You can always call for the vote. Yep, that's the other thing. And that, that's a.
That stops the.
Correct.
Conversation.
All right. Well, any other items? So we've made the motion on the, on the, the one, the one change. I don't necessarily think they need to come back unless we wanna bring something specific back. It was just scribbling, yeah, it was clarification. We already voted on that.
Yeah.
I, I totally like the limit, what we pulled from consent agenda. I mean, sometimes I think we just, I mean, there's, there's stuff on there that we talked about the week, two weeks prior to and then we bring it back to a full presentation. I mean, that, that kinda, I mean, that's taking a lot of time. I'm just wondering, if we've already had a full presentation, I mean, do we do it again? I mean, maybe limit, we can pull it, but not have a full presentation again.
Can this be a visioning workshop discussion?
Because I feel like this is kinda the management of meetings, which is something I've heard you talk about. Like, I'm totally down to have this discussion, but I wanna like think about it.
It's also primarily for the new council member who's coming in. So to, you got it, because you need to, number one, you need to read the rules of council because we do follow it, even though some things we follow more closely than others. I mean, we follow the spirit of it, I would say, at least I try to. But you need to, I mean, do you have questions or is there anything you're unclear about with regards to the rules?
No, not yet.
Okay.
You gotta work with them for a little while.
Always, always turn your mic on when you talk. The public can't hear you when you got, but that's not in the rules. But it, it was, it, it was a point, an actual issue at, at, many years ago with some folks who didn't like to turn their mic on.
So, could I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rules of council with some, the minor cleanups, clarifications that we've discussed. And that should there be any additional discussion or needs, that we can bring that back.
Second. All right, motion by Councilmember Harris, second by Councilmember Heiser, that we approved the rules of council and affirm the rules of council as amended and that we acknowledge and, and say that anyone can bring it back if they would like to, to discuss further. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item twenty-seven, consider nominations and selection of a mayor pro temp for twenty twenty-five. Here we are at the end, Mayor Pro Temp Rizzo, been, been the mayor pro temp for a while. You have thoughts? Anybody have thoughts on either nominations or?
Just wanna say a statement real quick. I wanna thank the, the dais for giving me that honor the, last year. When I was appointed mayor pro temp last year, when I first re-elected, I came to a surprise, so I just wanna say thank you. Thank Councilmember Zuniga for nominating me. It definitely, I did my best as mayor pro temp in the last year. I, I attended every meeting I could. I don't miss meetings. It's something that I take it, take, you know, very wholeheartedly as for the job that I signed up for. And I make a lot of daytime meetings during my years, mayor pro temp. Hope I did this dais well. I, I worked with a lot of federal and local officials. I built great relationships with our county commissioners and everyone else around us, state and the federal level. Brought in, helped bring in dollars as well, along with the mayor and rest of my council members. And just wanna say thank y'all for the opportunity and I appreciate it. One of the things I will say is that, you know, mayor pro temp, it's not just about the title, it's about the job. And that's, titles are fleeting, they don't mean anything. It's about the job, so doing the job is really, really important. So when y'all entrusted me with this job, I did my best. And hopefully, I brought a lot of value to it, to the dais, so thank y'all.
Thank you. Yeah, and I will just, I'll just echo what you said, that mayor pro temp oftentimes is, gets the call from the mayor when I can't make something. And Robert, you are always, you are always available and you took that seriously. If I couldn't make something, you always tried very hard to make sure that you could and I appreciated it a lot.
The reason I was laughing is because everybody says it's, I got the job where the mayor doesn't wanna do something, I love you.
The cleanup man.
Cleanup man. All right, does anybody have any nominations for this coming year?
I just wanna say, thank you, Robert, for, you know, being that mayor pro temp. I, I did see your working effort in that role and, you know, you set a very high bar. And, you know, you put in the time and the hours and, you know, you had a lot of dedication to that, to that. So thank you for that service.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any discussion? We need nominations.
I'm, I'm not flexible in my work schedule to, to carry this kind of role at this time, so. I, I will not be considering, and please, please don't consider me either on the dais for mayor pro temp.
Well, I guess I'm gonna go nomination. I've enjoyed being mayor pro temp. It's a lot of work, but it, it's worth it. I know someone that has a really flexible schedule and I don't know if he's interested in the job, but Bear Heiser, would you be interested in being mayor pro temp?
Uh, yeah, that would be an honor.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilmember Heiser. Seems like you have any objections to that. I do, I do think your schedule is flexible and I know that it's helpful. It's, it's not a requirement for this job, but it is beneficial when that, that can happen, so I do, I do appreciate that. And you're going into your third year, so you've, you've been around a while to see, see what it is and what the job is. And I don't know what I think about you in the middle of the meeting because you like to like stand up and stuff, but clearly I did too today, so. Any, any other discussion?
I just wanna ask Bear if, you know, this a role you feel comfortable, you know, navigating into and, you know, being available and.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Representing.
Availability is our greatest ability, not to sound cliche, but I think just, you know, running the meetings is something that's gonna take a minute to get used to if the time comes. But other than that, you know, I've had two great men to follow in my two years, two-plus years here on the dais, so I mean, I think that there's been a good precedent set that would be helpful. Thank you. Motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Councilmember Bear Heiser as mayor pro temp for the year of twenty twenty-five. And just wanna, wait one second, so I can do some discussion.
All right, the motion is for Councilmember Heiser. Is there a second?
So I'll second it.
All right, motion by mayor pro temp, seconded by councilmember Zuniga, that we select Bear Heiser for mayor pro temp for this next year. Is there discussion, mayor pro temp?
Yeah, it's not about a bar or who did it which way. It's about bringing this dais and the work ethic towards the position. So my challenge to you is to get the work done. Do your best to work with all partners at all levels and make sure that you're, know that what you're being given is by your fellow council members. And it's, it's not just a title, it's a job. And what we expect from you is a hundred percent to do the job and do it in a way that reflects this dais. So I would really appreciate it if, if you hold those words dear and do a great job, please.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item twenty-eight, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding the twenty twenty-five council visioning workshop. And if we can make this last until midnight, that would be appreciated.
Sleeping in this council meeting. Good evening, Amber Smyes, Assistant City Manager. For the record, we have the council visioning workshop for twenty twenty-five to discuss. So each year, the council holds a visioning workshop to discuss the goals and plans for the year. And it sets the stage for the budget season by providing critical direction on y'all's key priorities and expectations. And it also provides an opportunity for you all to evaluate and update the city's strategic plan. So items to discuss with us tonight is the facilitator, topics for discussion, potential dates, locations and site visits and budget considerations. Facilitators have been used and play a crucial role in guiding discussions and ensuring effective communication and achieving productive outcomes in group settings. The intent is to have a facilitator leave a half a day session focused on developing the council's vision, priorities and goals for the coming year. Ramsey Consulting has been selected. They have experience in working with city council workshop design, planning and facilitation. And the facilitator will interview each council, council member prior to the workshop to prepare and organize a tailored discussion unique to the council. Possible topics include update to the strategic plan, key performance indicators and performance management dashboard, capital improvement program, planning and oversight, the downtown master plan, budget process review, council meeting format and management, project visioning and others. So if there are any other topics, we could take this at the time or later, okay. The dates for you to consider, we were thinking March of twenty twenty-five to kick off the budget season. It would be a working weekend. We'd begin at six P M. on Friday and end at twelve P M. on Sunday. And so these are the weekends in March that would be available to you. We'd like y'all to make that decision within the context that we do have the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference going on March tenth through the twelfth, Monday through Wednesday in Washington, D. C. The locations have varied throughout the years, but are typically chosen in cities where the council can visit different development, city facilities, infrastructure or programs that may be relevant to Kyle. Possible locations for you to consider this year include San Antonio, Denton, Fort Worth, Dallas and Kyle. San Antonio, why we looked at that one, it has public amenities, downtown development, redevelopment and mixed use development patterns. Here are some of the places to visit in San Antonio, Pearl District, San Antonio River. Here are some of the places to visit in San Antonio, Pearl District, San Antonio Riverwalk, the Central Library, Hemisfera Park, Brooks City Base, San Pedro Creek, Mission Reach hike and bike trails.
Amber, can we go back to the dates real quick?
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have thoughts towards those particular, those particular dates? I cannot do the first one, so. The six, March seventh through ninth is not, is not an option for me, unfortunately.
And we've got, um, for anyone that's got school edge kids, this is gonna be spring break.
Which one, the first one?
I'm not sure, it just depends on-
The second one is spring break?
I think so.
All right, so now we're to the third, March twenty-first through the twenty-third. No, that's spring break. Spring break is the seventeenth through the twenty-first. Maybe, that's what's in my calendar at least. Seventeenth through the tw- so it doesn't matter, the second or the third is gonna be on, on the bookend of one, of spring break. Either the beginning of spring break or the end of spring break. And I'm sorry, I just, I have, I have no option. I cannot miss, I cannot make it on the seventh through the ninth. Does anybody have a preference on first to open spring break or to close spring break? Or to suggest another date? I'm sure that there are other options as well.
Spring break was the seventeenth through the twenty-first, which is-
Correct. So the fourteenth through the sixteenth is the weekend before spring break, and the twenty-first through the twenty-third is the weekend after. So if you've got a big ten-day trip planned.
I guess the twenty-first.
Well, hang on, so the twenty-first is Friday of spring break, the fourteenth is the Friday before. So if you want to get the most spring break, we'd probably do the, the fourteenth through the sixteenth, because that starts on the Friday before spring break, and then you're back on Sunday. It's one extra day that way. But did someone say the fourteenth through the sixteenth was bad outside of the spring break?
No, that works for me. I'm just thinking about my kids being at school and when-
Right, but-
So the fourteenth through sixteenth logistically makes the most sense.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, because Friday, the twenty-first, when we would be leaving, the kids will be home. Friday, the fourteenth, when we would be leaving, the kids are in school.
That's just gonna be a long weekend.
It's a long weekend, and it's all work at the workshop too, so. But it's-
The tenth through the twelfth, Monday through Wednesday.
So can we make a decision for fourteenth through sixteenth? Does that work? Were you at Mark?
Well, we'd been talking about a ski trip while the boys were out of school that week. That would put a keg into that, but, uh, I made a commitment when I took this role, so.
Well, the fourteenth through the sixteenth would still give you spring break to, there's a ski trip in there still.
I'll make it work.
Mark, I don't want you to get in trouble. Your literal first night.
Okay, all right, so fourteen through sixteen?
Fourteenth is my birthday, but I-
Oh.
I'm celebrating with you guys, man.
Oh, it's part of it.
I don't know how good I'll be after the fourteenth. It's a birthday, man.
All right, sorry about that. Happy birthday, Erle.
All right.
All right. And, uh, what were the dates, or the, the, I was thinking, we haven't been to San Antonio in a while, and it's the shortest drive, so especially considering that, that part, and they've got a great downtown district, so those are the options. I'm good with them working on a San Antonio trip. It's just an hour away.
Yeah, but we've seen San Antonio.
We've been to, we've been to-
I'm bored with San Antonio.
Like, three times.
Yeah.
And, and where did we go last year?
Bastrop.
Bastrop last year. And then it was, it was Dallas before.
Yeah, Fort Worth has some redevelopment that is really fascinating.
Prior to that, it was Frisco.
Been there in the last five years. The parks and downtown, um, have some excellent models that we could use.
I'm open Fort Worth, too. I think that's a good suggestion. I'm just, I, it's just a big, long weekend, and so the getting there faster helps me a little.
Did, uh, council, Rizzo just said council did Fredericksburg. I, I mean-
That was our first one.
With downtown being a big priority for us in the future, I think that they have a pretty cool historic looking downtown.
Who has not been to Fredericksburg's downtown?
Huh?
It's like, who has not been to Fredericksburg's downtown?
I've been for a day, but never like-
Yeah, the di- the difference was-
I think it was before I was in the seat.
Well, we met, we met with the city officials there, talked about some of their plans, uh, talked more about A M. I. watering, because they've got A M. I. there as well, so, um, I'm sad that they beat us to it, smaller city.
Yeah.
Oh my God, that's bad. Anyway, uh, but we did learn a lot when we were there. But the only ones left from that trip were Councilmember Tobias, uh, from that work session was Councilmember Tobias, the mayor, and myself. So everybody's in.
Well, I've been to San Antonio more than anywhere, so to that's to Laura Lee's point, because we often, T M. L. is in these big cities also. It hasn't been in Fort Worth, so I do think Fort Worth makes sense as a new place for us to go that we don't regularly visit. So I could totally get on board with Fort Worth.
T M. L. is Fort Worth this year, too.
Is it really?
Is it?
All right, well, there are no good or bad options.
What about, uh, staying in Kyle?
See, Kyle's a beautiful place.
I have to bring that one up.
Well, I, I understand the desire to stay in Kyle, but the point is for us to, is to, where you're away, you're not, you're not staying at your house. It's a full immersive experience, and Kyle will, everybody, you know, it's just not the same. All right, Fort Worth or San, uh, um, San Antonio, Tobias?
Wherever you guys were.
All right, McKinney?
I'll say San Antonio if we're leaving town.
All right.
Fort Worth.
San Antonio?
Kyle.
I'll do a say, it's short.
Not Fredericksburg?
You can say that. Fort Worth. All right, so it's three San Antonios, two Fort Wores.
One Kyle.
And so one Kyle. All right, San Antonio it is.
What is it?
It's San Antonio.
No.
You weren't paying attention. All right. Any, anything else? Amber, sorry to, I'm just trying to run us through our budget considerations. Go ahead.
This is a budget consideration. We did a rough estimate of what it might cost to travel, um, away, um, so thirty thousand. But next step, we will bring you back a resolution authorizing the workshop with the location and the dates and, and estimate of the budget as well for you to approve.
And I would just ask if there's anything, if you want to stay on the Riverwalk, if you have a particular area that you're looking to stay in or, or in San Antonio, if you want to throw those out, it's, sometimes it's so many different places. If you have something that's in mind that would make sense, let us know. We'd be happy to, to look at it for you.
Okay.
Can I comment?
Sure.
It's not really about the cost, but the facilitator part of it. I'm still, you know, on, not sure if that works, works out well, because I, I want to kind of just get to the points and get, get as much done without that intermediary, uh, part of it. So-
Yeah.
If, if it's gonna be the facilitator running the agenda time, that, that does not, that, to me, did not work out efficiently.
Yeah, I, I-
From, from only my perspective, not, not others.
You're not the only one that I heard from on that last year is that you, you really want some more time, uh, to talk amongst yourselves and have maybe staff bring up some topics and figure out how to tee up issues and let the council work through that. And what we were proposing this year is, is something different than having a facilitator there for all three days to go through it. But perhaps just the first part of the retreat, starting on that Friday at six o'clock or so, is that we would kind of lay some ground rules, talk about what visioning sessions are, why they're important, some goals, a little bit of goal setting, and then all of Saturday, all of Sunday, then would be that more freestyle kind of conversation. But I, I do think, my, my experience is, um, councils need to have a little bit of that from the facilitator, a little bit of those visioning type discussions about how do these work, why are they important? It's up to you. It's your, it's your meeting, not mine. It's yours. And, but I, I'd recommend it to you. I think, um, Rick Robinson is someone I've worked with in the past. I think he would do a good job of doing that for you and give you plenty of time to have that open discussion, which I think, I think the overall feedback I got was that some of that was missing from, from, from that discussion. But there is some structure, too. It's, it's, uh, three days to fill, and it's a lot of information to try to go through. And so that's, that's been how I've set it up, but we're open to do it however you want.
So are we thinking of starting early on the first day? Or are we thinking about in the evening? Like, because I want to make sure that we can get the most out of the day that we're there, and maybe the last day is a half day. I don't know.
Well, that's what we were looking at, is the half day on Sunday to go to about noon on Sunday. That way, depending on where we go, we'd travel back from that. But again, we, we were thinking like six, gives everybody a chance to put in some hours of the job or whatever they might have going on with their family that day, and then make trip down to wherever we're going. We could start earlier if you'd like.
I have an easier, flexible to get off early. I don't know, I don't want to speak for everybody else, Mr. Tobias, because when we got to, uh, Bastrop, you know, we got there, we got a really late start, right? Because we were all accommodating the late, uh, the arrivals were late.
Well, I, I just want to say I agree with what you just said a thousand percent. And I'm, especially with the way that you've set it up. So I've had experience with five of these things, and each and every time, I have always felt that the weakest part, the part that drugges down, was the facilitator, every single time. That's been my, uh, some are better than others. But I think this group in particular with Brian and knowing everything we've got going on, filling up the time is not our problem. So I, I would prefer to have it be us and get, get focused on the, uh, on the work and save the money. Leave the facilitator out. I, I, that's, that's been my opinion, but I'm not trying to drive that, because there is some benefit to a facilitator. It's not Brian, which is actually a good thing, so that he's not the one that's right in the middle of it all. But at the same time, that's not a good enough reason for me to, to, to go through those exercises that the facilitators like for us to go through. I just don't think we get much out of them. We'd never come back to any of the talking points of what that facilitator wants us to focus on. Maybe we produce documents and things like that, but we never go back to it. But we have a lot of things that we could really stand to have extensive time discussing and going through.
I think, Mayor, if I could add, if we could break it down into each category, uh, that pertains to our city with your public safety, your parks, your economic development, your roads, your infrastructure. And those are divided up into throughout the day and talking points. And put it on all seven of us to do homework, to have our stuff. And I, and I, and I remember Councilmember Dex Ellison used to do this, where he would do his homework and he would have all his discussion points ahead of time. So when we were talking about economic development, he would have his homework ready. This is what I, my vision is for the following year for economic in the area. Same thing for parks. And I think if each one of us can maybe go that route, if we're not doing a facilitator, you can guys have your plan of each category for our city, and then we can have our stuff ready to go and have, this is what I want to bring for District Six, this is what I want to bring for the city, and so forth and so forth. That way, the conversation stays on track, and we're not going all over the place like a lot of times we do. Because we all have different opinions, we all have different says, but sometimes I think certain conversations last a lot longer, more passionate, and other things. Yeah, at least we'll have, we can already have an idea of where we're going at. Or maybe if you want to give us that guideline to have it ready to go, we can do our own homework. When we come here, we're ready to go, ready to get in the game, ready to get to work.
Well, I, I think, again, we're happy to do it any way you want, but my experience has been it's challenging, because there's seven of you. You all have very different ideas of what are the priorities that you want to focus on. And I think without a little structure, it can be all over the place and very frustrating for everybody involved, that you may not get the things done that you wanted to get done. There's no time limits on how long you can talk and all these kinds of things about how we will go through it.
Brian, that's been what's happened the last five years. We get to the end and we, we're out of time, and we haven't gotten to talk about the things we want to talk about.
Well, you know, uh, may, maybe that's true, and I think we need to figure out how to do that. You're never gonna get through all of it. I think there's so much to go through, and, and prioritization is, is the key in these things, is to, to look at what's important. This is a list of things that we thought would be important, but there may be other topics. I think trying to elicit from council, what are the things that you want to talk about? Are these it? Are there things beyond this? It would be helpful to know that, so perhaps we could try to plan that out. But there are hundreds of capital projects, there's all kinds of visioning work, there's all kinds of things happening in this organization, in this community. And it's really trying to be good stewards of your time to be focused on those things. So I've always felt like a facilitator can help set the stage, help us figure out how to do that, what's the role of council, what's the role of this visioning workshop? What do you want to try to get out of that? But I do think we needed some, this group certainly needed some more time just to have a little bit more free-flowing discussion on that. So again, I'm happy to do it however you want, but I think just walking in with a lot of different subjects and ideas, that's, it's, that's tough. It's tough to get through it, so just to, my two cents.
Okay. What if we have a facilitator come in like the week before for an evening? And work with us on what the structure's gonna be, what our priorities are. I, I, you know, I agree with the discussion about facilitators. I think they have wasted a lot of the council's time. And I find that to be true of boards, too. We tend, nonprofit boards bring in facilitators for their board, visioning workshops every year, and they tend to be a waste of time and money. But I think that having one come in and help us address the agenda and the structure, and then we'll have a week to prepare, like Councilmember Tobias said, to address those issues that we've agreed in advance that we want to discuss. Might work really well.
Robert?
So I'm gonna disagree with everybody. And the reason why is, I'm looking at this picture on the screen, and it tells you how, why the importance was. I mean, I remember our vision workshop last year when we were all on different pages, and we're so far from coming together. And the facilitator and the artist brought this together and brought, brought us together, where we finally were able to talk about a vision. I do agree that we might have been able to hit the important things earlier. I'd like to have started them earlier on Saturday instead of on Sunday. But I think initially, the facilitator's gonna be the person that brings us together, because, look, we all have different opinions. We all have different visions. Being able to come together is, I think, is, is not an easy task. It, it takes someone to do that. It's not gonna be Brian, because we work with Brian. Look, honestly, we, we all look at Brian and we all want to position, and, and try to get Brian to see our thoughts.
Right.
We all work for that, right? But at the end of the day-
That rang true.
But, but, but at the end of the day, you know, a facilitator has no, no, nothing to gain by trying to sway us one way or the other. It's about bringing us together. And it's kind of what I'm looking at.
So I think maybe what Brian said is a little bit of what we've all said, maybe not me, but, but you're saying you're gonna, that facilitators in a more truncated or a, a more limited role still has a place, but that you are trying, you're preparing to allocate more time for structured discussion with the council and the city manager and, and the executive team.
Yes, sir, and I, I think, again, our, our, the way we've talked about doing this is that Friday evening and whatever time we decide we would meet. So we were thinking six o'clock, and maybe you want to start earlier with six o'clock. That would be the facilitator time to set the stage for the whole retreat. How's this gonna work, what we're gonna go through? And then Saturday and Sunday is just us.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay.
But I'm, I'm, again, we're trying to help, be helpful, and I was trying to listen to some of the feedback and concerns that we got from the last time. It's, you know, seven different perspectives, and we have a new perspective with, with Mr. McKinney being on the council. So it's just, we're always trying to find that right balance of what everybody's looking for, and it's, it's tough to find that. To make everybody feel like that you walk out of there and you all got what you wanted in that time. That almost never happens, but we try to get ninety percent of it.
I think we should just let them go with the way they're planning it. They know our feedback, because I agree with what Laura Lee said. I agree with what Zuniga said. But at the same time, I could, I sense that you really don't want to be responsible for every minute of it all, and there's reasons for that. And I, you know what I mean when I say that, the one in the, in the middle of the discussion. It's good for, it's good for someone else to take a outside view and engage us, because they, they don't have to answer to us in the same way that you do. And so they can be a little more direct with, with us.
I think they can, they can also give you their perspective of what they're seeing and, and the pitfalls of approaches that you have and, and ways that don't come across as defensive. Where if it's coming from staff and we're trying to point out weaknesses, it's, it's difficult.
Bear?
It, it seems like this is gonna be cleaned up, but I was just gonna support what Councilmember Rizzo said and Brian's recommendation, because I definitely think that we need somebody, at least for part of the time, to steward conversation, to keep us on track.
Well, it sounds like he's already got a hybrid between all seven of us planned, so.
So.
All right. Anything else before we adjourn? Eleven thirty?
If there's any other topics that are of major interest that you want-